Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisogi territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogi and Chipewa nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. With respect to the agenda, we're going to do a little bit of juggling, and I hope I'm going to get this right. We're going to add a delegation as item 7.2 to hear the presentation from Andrea Brown and David O'Brien on the library's budget. We will also be moving the budget discussion to the end of the agenda, so it's not broken up. Because we have an exciting presentation from the grade five students of the Archie Stouffer School today at 11 o'clock. So rather than break up our budget discussion, we'll move it to the end, so we can keep that all together. So having said that, could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillors Carter and Fury.
Be it resolved that the February 14th, 2024, Halliburton County Council agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof this morning? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the minutes of January the 24th? Councillor McKechnie and Rayal.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the January 24th, 2024 meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. And we have no business arising from the previous meeting, so we'll move into delegations. The first being Jenny Riger from St. George's Anglican Church with a letter or requesting a letter of support. Here we'll be joining us by Zoom.
Good morning. My apologies for not being there in person. I have come down with COVID, so you didn't want me in person.
Well, that's fine. We're glad to see you online.
Thank you. I am requesting a letter of support for an application that St. George's Anglican Church in Halliburton would like to submit to the Ontario Trillium Foundation Capital Grant Program. In 2019, St. George's put in a wheelchair lift, which allows people who have mobility issues to get down to the lower level of the church into an all-purpose room. There is an inadequate ramp and bad angled corners, and there are no wheelchair-accessible washrooms in that lower level to allow people to get into what is really the most lovely room in the church, the Hunt Room, which is the big room, if you've been there, that overlooks the lake. It's lovely and bright, big windows. It's just a beautiful room for people to use. We'd like to have the grant to correct the mobility issues of the ramp, the washrooms, and the bad angled doorways. And we have asked ACM Design, who are authorities on accessibility corrections, to take the lead on designing a plan for us. The project will only go forward if we get the Trillium grant. We need to have the full funding from Trillium. We are not asking the county or the municipality to contribute in any way other than through letters of support. DICEART Council has already submitted a letter, and I'm coming to you to ask for your support at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Could I have a mover in a second then to support writing a letter by Councillors Carter and McKechnie?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives information delegation from Jenny Riger on behalf of St. George Anglican Church. And that Halliburton County Council supports the St. George Anglican Church in their application to the Ontario Trillium Capital Grant to make the church more accessible for all individuals using the facility. And for the staff be directed to forward a letter indicating council's support of this project.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks so much for bringing your request forward, and we'll get that letter ready for you as soon as possible.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Next up is Andrea Brown and David O'Brien from the library. Normally, we would have included you in our overall budget discussion, but because you're here early and our budget discussion isn't going to take place for some time, we thought we'd give you an opportunity to speak and run. Excuse me.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. The council has already had a presentation on the budget from Andrea, I think a week ago or somewhere around there. We'd really like to know, or we would like to answer any questions that you have of us prior to your dealing with the budget later today. So rather than go through it all again, are there any questions that we can answer for members of council to help with your work this afternoon?
I guess I would ask if there have been any changes. There's nothing different that you have to present from what you brought to us at the last meeting?
So we had outlined some additions to what appeared in the Questica report that Andrea Robinson presented. Those changes were, requested changes were noted. So I can outline them here for you today.
If you would please.
So we had requested $2,000 for air filters for the air purification systems in our smaller branches. The machines themselves were funded from reserves last year. And there's the ongoing maintenance, which was not previously a part of our budget. In order to make the machines work, they need replacement filters. We have requested $5,000 for our eBooks budget. In addition to the previous amount, this is due to the increased demands that we have on our eBook and e-Audio Book collection. Since the pandemic, this collection has really increased in use. People are downloading, you know, many materials to listen to on their mobile devices and tablets and to read on those devices as well. We have $15,000 that we're requesting in our automation budget. I believe there was a typo made when the budget was entered in by the previous CEO. And this is for things that we need in terms of library software to keep our systems running. We're requesting $500 for our advertising budget, an increase of that. That is because we have a retirement coming up of someone who's been in their position for a long time, the collections development coordinator. We have a limited advertising budget, which is meant to promote the library programs and services. As well, the deputy CEO and public services manager posting will need to go up. So these, there are costs that we pay for advertising in the newspapers. And on the, there's a main library job posting site, so we need to pay to advertise those jobs. And because the collections development coordinator has been in that role for a long time, and she's retiring, we probably will need to do a job evaluation. Usually that costs about $300 for a consultant to review those costs. So those are the additional costs that we are requesting.
And I believe, Madam Warden, that those points were put forward at the last meeting, that Andrea was here.
So are there any questions from council? Councillor Fury?
Last year, you had one of your lead staff leave partway through the year. Did you end up with a surplus last year on your budget?
We, yes, we did have some transition of staff members, so there was some surplus, yes. We have a healthy reserve fund and-
So to answer it, you put it in reserves, a surplus?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just fine. Okay, well, we will be, you know, talking about the budget later on today. I don't believe that we'll be passing the budget today. But just acknowledging that, I mean, despite all the good works that the library does here, your ask for this year's budget is considerably more than the rest of the county's departments and has been for the last couple of years, and I'm not sure that that's sustainable. But I mean, that's up to council to discuss. So it may be as late as the first meeting in March before we actually land on a bottom line. It could be at the end of the month, but we'll, we'll see how discussions go. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
Madam Warden, I appreciate that comment that you just made. We've put a budget before the county, which is our job as a board at the library, and it's now up to the county to deal with it. And whatever you do, we will have to deal with that particular decision at a board meeting upcoming. So I appreciate very much your comments on that. Thank you.
Councillor Daye?
Thanks. Maybe just while they're here, perhaps we could ask Andrea or Dave to just refresh us a little bit on why that increase is there and how it's linked to the new opening of the Dorset branch and the importance of that branch to our community.
Thanks for the great question. So the largest amount of our budget at the library and all public libraries is staffing. It, you know, the staff are the heart of what public libraries do, serving the community. And the library board in the budget that we have put forward for council's consideration has requested 10 hours additional programming time per month in this budget. So that's in addition to the 50 hours of programming time per month that has been traditionally in that budget. And very exciting, we are opening a new library location in Dorset, in the Dorset Recreation Centre. This is amazing. The residents of Dorset on social media are delighted that, about the news about the new branch opening there. So if we increase a new location, the main cost to the library beyond setting up the library, which we're doing with our reserve funds, is the staff to run the library. So because we are adding a new location and adding staff, inevitably that's going to increase our staffing costs. There's not, not really a way around it. We can't open a new location and not increase our costs of staffing. We think it's really important to serve our entire community. We have bustling library hubs in Minnet Hills and Halliburton. But the citizens in, you know, Goodrum, Cardiff, Highland Grove, Stanhope and Dorset, you know, they need library services too, and it's a long way for them to come to the urban centers. So we're excited about Dorset, but we do need more money in order to pay staff to work there.
Any other questions?
Do we have a resolution to receive their invitation?
We don't, we, sorry, Madam Warden, we don't, we don't need a resolution.
Okay, thank you. We will take into consideration the comments that you've made, and if there are no further questions.
And Madam Warden, if there are any questions beyond today's meeting, as you get to the point where you want to finalize the budget, we'll be more than prepared to come back.
Well, as we all understand, we can't get into the weeds about your, about your budget. So, you know, really, it'll be a bottom line of how much we're able to invest, and we'll let you know. I doubt that there'll be questions, but if there are, we'll, we'll sure let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda would be planning reports, and I don't believe we have any planning reports this, this meeting, so we'll move into public works. Good morning, Sil.
Good morning, Madam Warden and members of council.
First up is your public works status report.
Yes, our status, it's our regular status report. I have two items to note. One, that we have a new engineering technologist that started this past Monday, that backfilled one of a vacancy that we had before from this past 23. And he seems to be doing well and fitting in, so it's great, great news. Another item is there was, we did not receive any submissions for our RFP for the land registry renovations. Staff contacted four companies to see if there was, for follow-up, and two responded that they were interested, but at this time they could not manage the work. So right now, we're looking at our options to move forward ASAP, so.
Well, that's disappointing.
It is, yeah.
So any particular plan on, on, you know, finding somebody to do that work, or do you foresee that we're going to be delayed?
No, I don't think we're going to be delayed necessarily. It's just going through a different procurement process to move forward.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So, yeah, Sil and I talked about that, and we're actually coming up with different solutions where we actually have a different methodology going forward. So we still, our goal is still to be in the new building just prior to Christmas of this year for council chambers, but we'll report going forward. We think we have a solution that hopefully will help us to maintain our schedule.
Good news. Okay, any questions on the status report? Could I have a mover in a second or two to receive it? Councillor Burton, Councillor Rayal.
I'll just put it with my budget file. Yes. So be it resolved that the February 2024 status report for capital progress operations and approvals and road maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? That's carried. Next up is your road safety study.
Yes, this, this report is a road safety study for County Road 3, Lamorgan Road in the Minicock Lake Road intersection and Blue Hawk Lake area. And due to collisions and a history of safety concerns along this section of County Road 3 involving vehicles turning in and out of private entrances, as well as the intersection within this section. The, the safety concerns are a combination of excessive speeds in that area as well as the visibility of the, of the, sorry. A combination of excessive speeds and the visibility for people to maneuver their turns into or out of private driveways or the intersection. And this is due to the geometrics of the road, so vertical, horizontal curves as well. We, the roads department use the TAC, the Transportation Association of Canada Guidelines. Using the guidelines, they assess speeds. A number of factors, which each road component generated a, a score and a total score for the, the survey recommended a 60-kilometer speed for that section of road. The results were tabulated, and that was the, the outcome of the, the study. And this zone would be 370 kilometers south of, of the intersection at Minicock Lake, and it would go northwards for 2.3, roughly 2.3 kilometers north, taking in the built-up area in that section of road.
Any questions for Sil? Councillor Rayal?
Oh, it's, so it, that section of road is very similar in its psychological approach to drivers as the section of 507 that goes down from, from Goodrum to Finn's Corner. And that is who can go down there the fastest and set records. And that's kind of sort of the way that whole section, the Buckhorn Road going down is. I have a funny feeling that that particular section of road going up to Halliburton is very similar in how fast can you negotiate the road regardless of the speed. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. I, I think that's important that we address the speed limit. Is there anything else we can do? I'm not, I'm not comfortable that that alone is going to reduce the opportunities for accidents as they're currently occurring.
Other, well, other options are basically enforcement as well. More presence in the area for enforcement of speed, speed zones, speed limits. For other options, it's, it's very limited for what we can do for that specific type of road. The speed zone change would be not necessarily an easy way to do it, but an efficient, I think it would be an efficient way to do it, considering the geometry of the road and the users and the built-up area in that section.
Go ahead.
I realize that the county really doesn't get directly involved with the OPP when it comes to coverage. That's the lower level. Is this something where we could have a serious negotiation with the OPP to say, listen, you gotta, you gotta really start looking at that area more, more than just a casual glance periodically? Random is a good thing if it's done frequently. And if so, does that work best at being approached by the lower level? In this case, it would be DICEART. If it was below that, it would be Highlands East, or is it something that the county could, could also get involved with?
If I could comment on that, I think that as the foremares do have a meeting with the OPP on a regular, fairly regular basis, that that request can be made. But we do have to keep in mind that there are a lot of other areas within the county that are, they get the same requests. Can you, you know, do additional patrols, and they've only got so many, so many hours when they can do that. But they're, they're pretty responsive when we've asked them to look at a specific area. So particularly, I'm not sure how much time it would take before the actual speed changes. But, you know, just in the, in the period fairly soon after the change, it would be, it would be a good thing. As we have, we're trying to set up a meeting in the, in the near future with the OPP, so we can make that request. Go ahead.
Just to add to Sil's comments and the Warden's comments, so as the road authority, being the county, it's, it's prudent for us to make the formal response to, to the OPP. And we can ask for more, greater enforcement because it's a change is the first part of it, and an ongoing monitoring part of it as well. That's something that we would regularly interact, and Sil's group does regularly interact with the OPP on areas we've identified as being, you know, high-cliffs and intersections or safety around speed and that. So that's a regular dialogue we would have with the OPP, but to the, to the Warden's point, the more we bring it up to the money, the better it is.
So could I have a mover in a second or two to receive Sil's report and approve the speed change? Councillor Shell and Rayal?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receive for information the February 14th, 2024 staff report, road safety study, County Road 3, Glengorgon Road. And the Halliburton County Council approve the speed reduction zone be created at 60 kilometers an hour on County Road 3 from point, from a 0.370 meters south of Minicock Lake Road to a 0.2, 2,385 meters north. And finally, that staff be directed to Men by a lot of 3392 to recognize the creation of the new speed zone on County Road 3.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is your county speed radar message board.
Yes, thank you, Warden. This report is just a short synopsis of, of the use and the effect of our speed radar message board. So the, the message board has been used throughout the county since 2018. And we have 34 locations where we have been installing the unit and observing speeds and recording speeds. The unit also records speed as well as traffic counts. So we do, and they are logged with times and dates. So it creates a good database that is very accurate that we can use for speed, speed zone surveys as well, and as well for targeted enforcement for certain areas. The speed radar message board has been very successful. It has shown that it reduces roughly 10% on average when it's on display versus non-display or if it's not there at all, which is a significant decrease in speed. And the unit as well records, displays the speed of the oncoming vehicle as well as it records the information of that vehicle when it's oncoming, as well as the vehicles moving away from the unit. So in both directions when the unit is there. So we do see the data that it collects for vehicles that are moving away from the unit as well, so in the other lane. And that's where we can find out the effectiveness of the unit. So versus when people see it and they don't see it. As well, just for instance, I have two, two roads, just for example, that you can see a dramatic difference when it's in stealth mode, which is non-display, and display mode where it displays the speed. And the county roads department of late has changed the way we install the unit in, in areas. We display, we installed the unit on a two-week basis. And the first week, it's on stealth mode, which is non-display, and it captures all the information. Most of the drivers don't know it's there, so it captures their regular movements. And then the following week, we click the switch and it's on display, then displaying the speed, and that's where we see the greatest effect is from one to the other. County Road 2 in the Devil's Lake area, the speed limit is 50 in stealth. 87% of vehicles were traveling over the speed limit. And then in display, it dropped down to 51% of vehicles going over the speed limit. So there's a considerable effect there. As well as 648 in the Wilberforce Road area, the speed limit is 70. Stealth was 76% of vehicles traveling over the speed limit. And in display, it went down to 60% of vehicles. So there is a considerable difference there. And staff believe that the program is, is successful and effective and continue moving forward.
But I found it to be very helpful information. To your point, Councillor Rayal, it does indicate that there's still a lot of people who don't pay any attention at all, just the way they go. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Councillor Rayal.
Yeah, just, just a point. You travel a lot into the Nappane area. And when you're coming down 62 or, or 41, rather, going into Nappane, they've actually got a permanent one there. And I don't know if anybody's like ours, our car, the driver probably has control, but the, the car travels as such a comfortable, you don't even know- the driver probably has control, but the, 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 the car travels as such a comfortable, you don't even notice what you're doing. And as soon as you come up to the thing, you see, oh, it flashes right off the bat. It makes you aware and, and you slow down. It's, it doesn't do with enforcement, it's just got to do with awareness. And, and you have to have two people talking in the front. I'm wondering if there are strategic places that in your mind, a permanent uh warning would make sense. I realize we can't do it at all, it would cost too much money. But there could be one or two where, where you're of the opinion that this could be a really bad place and, and, and this kind of a a more permanent solution for awareness would make sense.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Um, the, we did find that um if the unit is left in one place for a prolonged period of time, it becomes uh it blends in and, and people don't necessarily pay attention to it. I don't say all people don't pay attention to it, but it becomes uh just a natural thing and, and they just don't pay attention to it. So in our experience, we found that moving it around uh is very effective.
Any other questions? Councillor Carter?
It's just really a comment. Uh, in Minden, we tested a few of these and they worked so well that we've uh just put into our budget to buy some, some more of them. Um, in, in a number of the places where we've tested have just been in, within the village and it's made a noticeable difference in uh, in people's speed around the school, towards the arena, uh Long Water Street and so on. So um, we think these are very effective.
Um, we totally agree. I know Algonquin Highlands last year purchased two of them and um they're, it's, it's really been quite successful. So. Any other questions or comments? Could I have a mover in a second or two to receive the report? Councillor Dayu, Councillor Royale?
Be it resolved that Halberton County Council received for information that February fourteenth, twenty twenty four staff report radar message board update.
Well, in favor. That's carried. And finally, is a request from AORS to uh, uh, to potentially establish a municipal equipment operators course?
Yes, um, so this uh, this report uh is um to uh, that AORS is the uh Association of Ontario Road Supervis- Association of Supervisors, sorry. Um, and they've been uh providing um professional training um to municipalities um since nineteen sixty-one. So they've been around for quite a while and their mandate is to provide training to municipal uh to municipalities and also to advocate on their behalf. Um, so this program, um, they, the AORS have been uh working with Fanshawe College to develop this program. And they have applied for funding through the province. And they are requesting um a letter of support to um for this application for funding and uh creating, getting the program started at the college.
Questions or comments on the request? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or then to support the uh, uh, writing a letter of support? Councillors Carter and Fury?
Um, be it resolved that the County Halberton, sorry, be it resolved that County Halberton supports the work of the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors to develop a municipal equipment operators course to address the, the, the noted issues. And that the County Halberton calls on the province of Ontario's Ministry of Labor, Training, Immigration and Skilled Trades to fully fund a municipal equipment operator course in twenty twenty-four through the Skills Development Fund. And a copy of this resolution be sent to the Ministry of Labor, Training, Immigration and Skills Trade, David Pacini, the County of Halberton's Member of Provincial Parliament, Laurie Scott, and the Association of Road Supervisors of Southern Ontario.
All in favor? That's carried. And one last item, I would like to, on behalf of council, offer congratulations on your um promotion. This is Seal's first meeting as the Director of Public Works. So, well done. Look forward to hearing lots of good things from you. Thank you. Okay, next are administrative reports. Not sure that our agenda is going to follow through exactly the way we thought.
It's uh moving a little quicker on iPhone.
Okay, so under admin uh reports, uh, we've got a report on the OPP detachment board. So over to you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This may slow us down a little.
Okay.
Um, as I've, I sent a, I believe I sent an email to council, to council earlier, uh, excuse me, last week, where we received notification from the Ministry of Social General that the Community Safety and Policing Act was, will finally come into force April first of this year. Um, it was first introduced in twenty nineteen. Um, included in legislation is the transition from police services boards or uh community policing commi- committees um to OPP detachment boards. This was, a submission was made on behalf of the County of Halberton twenty, in twenty twenty. Um, that submission has now been, has been approved. Um, and so the long and the short is the legislation, I, I think it's a really, it's a good piece of legislation regarding police services boards because it provides consistency across the area and it's a little more focused policing efforts and it's prescribed uh compliance or adherence to community safety, well-being plans. Uh, the police, the police detachments now have to create action plans that are commented on by the municipalities while through the detachment boards as well as requirements for training um and annual reporting back to municipalities, structured annual reporting and prescribed annual reporting from the board back into the municipalities regarding the efficiency of policing. So you're having that independent community review back on the efficiency of policing in the area that will then be transported back up to the Commissioner of the OPP for a, a, I think a more wholesome review of the level of community policing we receive we in our areas. And it's a big improvement, I think, for Halberton County because we currently don't have, not have police services boards. Uh, so it's, it's a, it's an improvement and gives some structure to, to that going forward. Um, under the legislation or the regulations, excuse me, um, the Halberton Highlands Police Service, sorry, the Halberton County uh detachment board encompasses the entire county, geographic area of the county uh with one small admission. So currently we have Ha- Highlands East is, there is a small portion, I think it's the southeast corner of Highlands East is actually policed through the Bancroft OPP detachment. That will not change. So Highlands East actually has representation on the Halberton County Detachment Board and the Bancroft Detachment Board. In Algonquin Highlands, whereas there is some police provided into the northwest corner of the township um by, by Huntsville, but that is still considered to be within our detachment board. So the, 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 the representation for Algonquin Highlands will remain within the Halberton detachment board and not up into the Huntsville detachment board. Um, the board itself, it was approved as a seven-member board. Uh, one appointed member from county council, four appointed members from the local municipality, municipal councils, which is one member per council. One community member that's jointly appro- approved by um the four lower uh local municipalities and the county. And one provincial appointee, which is approved by the minister with input from the, the, basically the five municipalities that make up the detachment board. Um, a- as I mentioned before, this board is, is identical to what the submission was by the county into, into the, into Seoul Gen back in twenty twenty. Um, the, it's a report brings out the terms of the, of the membership are, is sta- staggered, which is good for continuity standpoint. So the, the elected officials, the term doesn't exceed the term of office. So as they have to be approved by April first, which is a bit of a hiccup for us. I'll talk about in a minute. Um, you, you would serve to the end of this term and then when the new council came in, they'd reappoint for, for the full term. The community appointee is not tied to the term of council, but it can't exceed four years. So in this case, whatever, whoever the community appointee is that was, is pointed this year, they will carry for a full four years or that position will carry for a full four years irrespective of the term of council. Uh, and the provincial appointee term is set by the minister. So that can be generally probably won't exceed the four years, but it's up to the minister as to what that will be and it'll generally be um consistent with uh across the province. Um, one of the concerns I had and expressed back to the province when I asked them what the implementation date or the go-live date of the board, it's April first of this year. So we basically have six weeks to get the framework structured going forward, even though they've been sitting on it for three years. Uh, we have six weeks to get the board together. Uh, my only concern is on that is not so much uh, we can get the, the elected officials appointed quickly. It's the ability to appoint the community member. Uh, I, I don't see that happening before April first. Uh, it could, but it'll be tight. Um, and the provincial appointee, because of their program, provincial appointees have to go through uh cabinet. Uh, and so there's a, it, it usually takes eighteen to thirty-six months for that to happen. Um, so I'll be curious to see how quickly they get the provincial appointees put in place. So um, that'll be interesting. But we, it will be able to function April first with at least the elected officials going forward. Um, again, because it's the province, they threw a couple twists in it. Um, the, it, there's a requirement to remunerate the provincial rep on the, on the board. So you have to pay a premium to the provincial rep. The other six members is at the, at the direction of, of the local councils, whether or not they receive remuneration or not. Um, as I mentioned before, one of the key points, I think, which makes this iteration of police servicing oversight um strong is it is legislatively tied to the community's safety and well-being plans of, of, of the county. So there's a, a strong link for the desires of our support service groups, the police councils into the, into that plan has to be recognized through the policing we receive during the course of the year. Um, the, under the act, they, they require unanimous support of things around community appointments um and funding. So the funding with respect to and the remuneration. So the, if, if the c- councils decide that remuneration is going to be accidents unanimous, we can proceed on our own decision. If there isn't unanimous consent, the province will step in and tell us what the remuneration is going to be. Um, same with the board funding. There is, because it's kind of the downside to the good part of the legislation is because of the activities of the boards is more prescribed and it actually will be more work for them to do. There will be a cost administered to the board. None of the legislation, the member municipality is responsible to cover that cost. Um, and again, if you use unanimous consent on the funding model uh for the board, the, the board, we can move forward on our own approval. If there is no unanimous consent, it actually, the default is equalized payments by all the members across the board irrespective of size or number of calls. It'd be equalized payments across, across the top. Um, so moving to getting ourselves going forward with respect to the um go-live date of April first, um, I put together a draft framework based on my understanding of a, what, how police services boards used to work, how the community safety plan goes and what the new responsibilities of the um board will be. Plus the requirement for remuneration, uh, put together a, a small budget, which is outlined in your piece. Um, based on the, the, from an administrative standpoint, the county has taken the lead on the administration part of this from the start. I would recommend that continue. Um, the community safety, well-being coordinator we have, Sue Tiffin, would ma- would take over, would be the administrator of uh administrator for this police services board. Um, and just based on the work and going, I estimated it's probably looking about thirty-five percent of her time would be occupied now by this because of its length to the, the safety plan and the reporting requirements. Um, as well as the remuneration cost, which just again, just from experience and what's going on out there, I estimated a hundred dollars per member, per meeting at ten meetings a year, whether or not it, it council decides to fund all seven members or not. If it does the max number, that'd roughly be at seven thousand dollars a year. And that leaves about thirteen thousand dollars for the administration of the thing. So that's your training courses. That's the, the reports. That's the community engagement because I think that's essential for it because it's tough to report back in effectiveness of policing if you don't have an engagement program. Um, and it's incidentals of, of running the operations. That's estimated around thirteen thousand dollars. Um, when added to the, the time cost of the staff, you're, you come up against a set, well, the seventy-three thousand dollar cost for the year for the operation of, of the board. Um, using two scenarios. First one is just from a looking at ability to pay and impact of going forward is of recommending that the county absorb fifty percent of the total cost, uh, which would be thirty-six thousand five hundred. And that we use the police funding formula to determine the cost of, of the local municipalities. That's the percentage that you would, at your local level, you get your police billing. There's the percentage they use or the, the, the calculation factor as to how much your pays are. So based on that, the split between that the remaining thirty-six thousand five hundred uh would be Dicard, or it would be sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, Minin Hills, twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, Algonquin Highlands, thirty-six fifty, and Highlands East, thirty-six fifty as well. Now that's subject to, you know, full remuneration and the thirteen thousand. And then those are estimates my, on my part. Because they're estimates, um, I met with the local C E Os on Monday and I've recommended that the county could absorb the full cost of the operations through twenty twenty-four because then some, some of the local tiers, our, our local municipalities have already approved their budgets. We could absorb those costs and we can give a analysis of how the funding goes and, and get, get a clearer picture of what the actual cost would be going into twenty-five. Um, and, and the, and the rationale behind having some inputs from the local municipalities. Now it allows us, because we have fixed costs with some of our staffing piece, but we have, we create a revenue stream for the community safety, well-being piece as well. So we can actually use that money to build up a reserve to self-fund the detachment board and a community safety, well-being program as we go forward with the rev- revenue inputs from the lo- from the local municipalities. So that was the rationale behind splitting the costs in the fashion that way. Um, with, with obviously subject to modifications to council go forward. Uh, Ms. Tiffin and I will, will, will work with the local municipalities to structure things going forward and report back to county council as, as directed.
Thoughts, comments, questions? Councillor Dayu?
Thank you very much for that overview. Is there, i- is it anticipated that there would be a formal or quasi-formal mechanism for our board to liaise with the Huntsville operation on issues that pertain specifically to the southwest corner?
Yes, it's through here, Madam Warren. Yeah, so it's actually, there'll be two levels that will be done. So through the detachment commanders themselves, they, they meet regularly and there is that, that communication backwards, but backwards, across communication that way. And also that's the, I think was one of the, the benefits of the new structure is that's built into the, into the, into the, the reporting mechanisms as well. So that would be part of the board would then, if it's a question in that service area, then it would go through either directly from board to board, board chair to board chair, or from detachment commander to detachment commander to address the questions going forward. It would be built into the mechanism. Um, and, yeah, so I'll look at it. Thanks.
So part of the difference being is that there is a, a formal agreement with the, with the Bancroft OPP. Whereas i- in our case, it's more like a mutual aid agreement. So. Councillors Carter and Manburton?
Actually, I have four points. Um, starting um with the cost allocation. At the end of the day, we only have one payer, which is the taxpayers of Halberton County. Um, so whether it's, you know, the money is uh paid at the county level or at the municipal level, it's, you know, the same person is paying it. Um, uh, you know, the taxpayer. So I, like I, I think we should have all the costs at the county level. Uh, the split of costs just adds uh an administrative burden and more, more complexity to this. Um, we're not talking about huge sums of money. And uh, so I think it should all be paid for at the uh, at the, at the county level. Um, the next and probably the amount that we're talking is, is estimated at the high end. Uh, hopefully. So you know, perhaps it, it won't even be that, that amount. The next uh point is on the uh the uh, the community appointee. I think that we should sort of have them at, sort of appointed for a two-year term and have it reviewed sort of every two years, uh, just in case um, that doesn't, it doesn't work out as well as we, we wanted. I think that in this first iteration, uh, from now until the end of this term, it should be the four mayors who are uh, who are the uh, the from each of the municipalities. And then after the next term of council, it can be determined whether that would continue or would be some other member of the uh, of the, of the uh, of the council at the municipal level. And the other thing is on the um the, the number of people. I, I'm not really certain. And I know everybody really likes to have committees and so on to have an odd number of people. Um, I don't necessarily think that that's necessary. Um, and so I, I question the need to have a member of county council if we have, if we already have one from each municipality. The way it is set up here, um, there is the possibility that the seven-member board could have four members from the same municipality. You know, the, the, the civic member, the provincially appointed member, a member of county council and uh, and the, the one from the municipality could be all from the same. the the one from the municipality could be all from the same same locale. So I I I I just think we should, I know that this came upon the request in twenty twenty. That was in those wild days when, you know, they thought this legislation would be approved shortly after they passed it. But now, you know, four years later, you know, I I don't I don't really see the need for the extra person. So that I would like to have some discussion on.
Do we have a choice? It didn't sound like we did.
Yeah, Madam Warren, that was gonna be my point. So the the makeup or the 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 composition of the board is actually set in the the regulation that was just passed. I believe, yes, there is an opportunity for us to ask for a change. If if that was the case, uh again, from experience, seven member boards uh are is a good number. It's a good functional number. And if council was looking to make a change, because I think Council Carter had that conversation yesterday, because it kind of that's one thing that stuck out to me is that county council got a rep as well. But I would recommend if we're looking for change, we ask the province to give us a second community number, not go to six, but keep seven and transfer the county council position to a community, a second community member. But I'll defer to council's direction on either either leaving that status quo or asking for a change.
I had a a number of questions as well, and some of them are tied to the points that you made. Like I I'm wondering about the timing that it takes to appoint it to choose a a community member and how we might go about that. So that would be my first question.
Yeah, so I personally left that out of my report. I have some thoughts on how it can be done. The 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 first part would be, uh I agree with Council Carter, a two year term. And it's a rotating basis through the four local municipalities as to like two years, it's it it's Dystart, the next two years, it's Agonkin Highlands, or whatever the case may be. But in the start that process by you would randomly pick the municipality, be pulling a name, pulling a name out of a hat, and that's who the first community rep is or whatever process. And there's develop a rotation from that. So every two years, the community rep changes, but it changes with the local municipality at the same time. And that would be how I think it could be done. But that's subject to whatever the five municipal councils agree to.
Well, and that's it just seemed to me that it would it be a challenging thing to find one person in the county that everybody would agree to. Go ahead, Counselor Carter.
I think we also discussed yesterday, are there limits as to who that person could be?
Yes, uh sorry, Madam Warren. So there are restrictions for retired police officers to sit on the boards. I put that question in, I didn't receive a response back on it. In fact, it's it's within a certain timeframe as to how long you could been retired before you can be appointed as a community member or provincial rep onto onto the boards. I'm still waiting for that response. I'll get that back to council as soon as I soon as I receive it. But there is a restriction.
That's interesting. You think that they would be well well suited for the role.
If if I make the rationale behind it, it is that the shift away from the police service board metrics into the new detachment board was meant to in in insert a greater community focused vision into the boards away from the subject matter experts into onto the committee. So I think that's where it came from was the was along those lines.
The 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 four appointed members of local municipal councils, does that have to be a member of council or could that also be a a member of the public? Depending on the council's choice.
No, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your viewpoint, the regulations are specific to elected elected official.
Um I wonder if we can come to terms on the remuneration? And if we agree that if one member of the committee is being uh given remuneration, that all should be. Just one decision that we could make here today. Thoughts on that? Counselor Dayu.
I personally struggle with that one a little bit. You know, when when we sign up for council, we we sign up for any variety of of things to do, including being members of of boards, et cetera, with no anticipated remuneration for those additional tasks. And for me, it's a bit of a budget savings to not do that.
That's true, but there are members, I mean, there are people who do get remuneration depending on the boards that they belong to. Comment?
Yeah, the yes, just from an optional standpoint. Some jurisdictions going, they actually will uh renumerate the community members and elected officials because they they've received remuneration in other courses, they say, but I've seen it both ways. See, wherever it's enumerated or just the community members are. So it's it's there's no set model. It's it goes. You're describing.
Other thoughts on remuner- remuneration? Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I think that we need to re remunerate people.
Any public members?
Yeah, yeah, all I think all the members should.
All members.
Should uh should get it. That way it's consistent, it's fair. You know, it does, it does take time, particularly if you have somebody who has who is who is not just totally retired and has has nothing else to do. You know, people taking time away from their business or whatever they they should. I mean, it's the numbers we're talking about are pretty, you know, token uh numbers. So I I I just think that it should they should be acknowledged.
Other thoughts on that, Counselor Rayo?
Yeah, I have a tendency to agree. For every board that I sit on, uh I can basically take the amount of time that I'm at a meeting and double that because
Or triple.
Because the 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 amount of work, the due diligence that has to be done to prepare for a meeting is almost as much, if not more, than the meeting itself. So, you know, if we're adding another hour to two hours of meeting, you're going to add another hour to two hours minimum of 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 due diligence to 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 do that. Uh and and you know, I'm sure all of us are getting to the point where how many hours do we have left? And so there has to be recognition of that as well.
Any other comments about that? Counselor Shell?
I would agree. And I mean, understand putting on different committees, you know, we're expected to take, do whatever, but we are paid per diem for those committees. If I have a library meeting, I'm paid per diem as to for each meeting. If I'm not there, then I don't get paid for it. So I kind of see this as the same same thing.
Um so are we in agreement with that, that there would be remuneration? Seeing as all around, can you live with that, Counselor Dayu? Okay, so to me, the last question would be on the cost sharing point that you raised. I mean, to me, it's kind of one half of one and six of one and half a dozen of the other, because if the county is paying for it, each municipality pays their share anyway. So, you know, you see any difference there?
The only difference is, and I had this conversation with Counselor Carter yesterday, is from our budget, like I'm responsible for representative budget to to the county, is that that's just that's our budget increase. Right? So I I appreciate the duality of of the system we're in where there is, but it's the short answer to your question is if we pay for it all, we can function that way. But that means that's the thirty six thousand five hundred dollars that we're adding to the totality of the county budget, right? Under the scenario before, and again, no disrespect to the the local municipalities, we were using uh the revenues received from the lower tier, their local municipalities, as a sustainable sustainability factor into the community well being plan. So that's the longer answer, whether you believe my 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 methodology and that, that that's fine. But that's how it was come up with. But the the short answer was on the the quantum of the of the administration charge. That's why my recommendation was that we carry the cost for at least twenty twenty four. So then we get an idea, okay, how much, what's the burn rate of the money going in, going into the into the board, and we could adjust going into twenty five. Either way, it it I guess.
Well, I I guess if we're going to, if you're saying that or suggesting that we pay for it for this year, that gives us an opportunity to see how things unfold and and come to agreements, you know, in our next budget. Round. Counselor Dayu?
Yeah, I I agree with the the C O. I do think it's important that we keep it separate, if only because if next year that whole amount is on county and and county is struggling to keep our tax rate low, then we've got to find savings and and those savings will not necessarily be, that will not be a a duty that is shared with lower tier when when really it is a responsibility for all of us. And there's the optics thing too. So I'm I I agree that it should be divided.
Okay, any other questions or or comments at this point in time about about the report? Counselor Dayu?
Just on the the representative from the community, geographically, that does make a great deal of sense. Another another filter, I guess, through which to choose someone would be someone who has their ear to the ground in terms of lived experience and folks who are most vulnerable in our community or most or least likely to be understood or whoever requires that that slightly stronger voice, which may not be which may not be necessarily someone that we could find from from each municipality, or or there might be just someone who is who's got their ear to the ground more on a county level than on on a municipal level. So I don't know when that decision would be made, but it strikes me that, you know, we do have some organizations in the county who who could represent the the less voiced yeah, in a in a really, really good way on the board.
But this is a member of the public that we're looking for, not an organization, you know, some representation from a specific organization. Counselor Carter and then Counselor Rayo.
So back to the question of the of any restrictions on membership. You know, obviously, somebody who would be coming from the public would have to have a police check. Is somebody with a criminal record allowed to be a member of the board? You know, I think these are important questions. I mean, we already have motions coming forward that people with criminal records shouldn't be allowed to be served as counselors. And and so I'm you know, I think we need more information or more guidance on who this person or persons should be. You know, it's it's good to have somebody who can represent, you know, the 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 public and and have lived experience, but at the same time, this is a police detachment board. You know, I I think that we need to know a little bit more about what are the rules and regulations?
I would definitely assume that there would have to be a police check involved in that. And I and I would like to go back to the the notion and see if there's agreement about about the revolving appointments. You know, for for each municipality, the only issue that I see with that is that that there's probably a lot more activity in Dystart and Minden than there is in, say, Ogonkun. Now, I mean, I'm just making an assumption, but I think it's a fair assumption that there's more police activity in the in the two larger municipalities than there are in the smaller ones. But if if, you know, taking turns for two year periods is what council wants, that's that's fine too. Counselor Rayo?
Yeah, I I'm kind of going a little bit with the composition of the committee itself and looking at the five elected officials being put there. Typically, when you have a board like this, it's the head of council or the mayor that sit as the representatives of each of the municipalities, which makes sense to me. Having said that, that would also mean that typically the warden would represent the county, which in our case, eighty percent of the time is a mayor.
That's not necessarily so though.
No, I realize that. I'm just saying. So at the end of the day, it's theoretically possible that you would end up with with a bit of a problem there because you have the four mayors, which makes sense to do. And then the warden would also be there, but that would be one of the mayors. So I kind of like the idea of maybe having two community representatives rather than the five elected officials. Now, I recognize that it takes time to find the right people, but I don't see why the rotation wouldn't work the same way. It would give the the two larger municipalities an opportunity to have the kind of representation that might be necessary because of their size. I'm not saying we should go there. I'm only saying it's something we should entertain because it would make sense.
The the fact that it needs to be a member, that's one of the reasons why I asked, does it need to be a member of council or can council each council appoint another member of the public? Because you do end up with an overlap. I mean, in in this case, um I I would be recommending, because Counselor Burton has had the most experience with police boards, that I would recommend that he be the council, county council representative at this point in time. He's he's already the appointed member for C P A C. But I would also wonder whether the meetings that the O P P have with the four mayors on a semi regular basis would continue as a as a separate item because they might have different issues than the police board.
It's my understanding that that relationship would change, like that they the the detachment board would become that conduit.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Shell?
Um I agree, should be the four mayors. And so is it possible then that our C O could be considered a member of county council to be like, does it have to be an elected official or is it just?
Representative.
Representative of county council. And the second thing I would say is I'm less concerned about where the person who as a member of the public lives than I am their qualifications. So to me, that where they live within the four municipalities really doesn't matter to me.
So it it sounds like we need a little bit of follow up with the with the solicitor general on on whether we can change the makeup of the board. We'll see what kind of response that we get.
Yeah, so I've I've just sent through a request up on specifically on any restricted criteria for membership. Because I know it had been talked about before about the former police officers being restricted, but I I can't find anything in legislation or the regs specific to that. I would say to to Counselor Shell's comment with respect to again, I'll but I'll ask the question, it it would be my interpretation is restricted to elected officials. I have no problem attending board meetings as a a representative of the county from administrative side and 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 Ms. Tiffin will be there uh on behalf of the municipality, sorry, the county as well. But I can, we can definitely work on that. And as for composition, that is just a legislative thing with respect to that's going back to the province and saying we'd like to have an additional community rep instead of a county council rep and see what they say, how it works out. It technically would require a formal formal amendment to the regulation that was just a just passed. But they may say, yeah, go ahead and do it and we'll process, you can, you know, run a parallel where we'll do it while it's being processed. But that's the question I've asked already. I'll hopefully I'll they've been pretty good at responding relatively quickly, so.
Any other questions or comments? So for now, we'll uh receive the report and and look forward to having another discussion hopefully at our next meeting, just to clarify what we can do about membership. Or is there what is there something else that you need from us today?
Um I I think I have enough going forward. The only point of clarification we agreed on in remuneration was the was the quantum of the remuneration agreeable, the hundred dollars per medium, because that was part of the approval. I just want to make one, I'm looking to send down to the local municipalities as to is what we've gone through and and walk them through it. And then I think we can set up subs enough meetings going forward from there.
So just to get some concurrence on the hundred dollars. If if it's good for one member, it should be good for all members. You've got to, um you want to add that to the resolution?
It it's in reports, we'll be fine.
Okay, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the report? Counselor Dayu and McCutney. I'm sorry, you had an additional question?
Yes.
Okay. Um and and I my apologies, Counselor Burton, did you had a it seems to me you had your hand up a while back and I missed you.
It was just actually to do with the with the timing.
Help is on its way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um it's actually
Need to just turn it on there.
Exactly. Uh through to Gary, and it was about the timing about the April first deadline. And I think I understood that you said that that we can move forward without the provincial or without the community people appointed?
Yes, that's correct. The the stipulation, as explained to me from the Solgen, was that we just have to have our framework submitted to the province where it would, all the stuff we just talked about, we, you know, we agree to cut, we agree to, you know, remuneration, we agree to this, we agree to that. That's the deadline. The boards are supposed to be functional by April first, and because we have such a high component of the elected officials, we can, we can be operational in time to meet an early April. Let's start.
Okay. Um I'm not sure. Did we get a mover in a second or? Oh, Counselor McCutney?
Be resolved that staff report CAO zero four twenty twenty four be approved as amended. And further, CAO be directed to provide the proposed framework to the Halliburton County OPP detachment board for the the detachment board to the local municipalities for discussion.
All in favor? That's carried. I think maybe we'll have a fifteen-minute break now.
Welcome back to the regular session. The next item on the agenda is the 2024 Health and Safety Annual Policy Review.
Good morning, Madam Warden and members of council. Before you today is the staff report. It's just basically our standard annual report. As required under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, council is required to review the policies annually. I've also attached the policies for councils review as well as the policy that the senior management team here at the county reviews annually, which was done at their senior management team meeting last week. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Michelle? Counselor Daewoo?
Thanks, it's more, I think, a question for council. With regards to the workplace violence harassment and sexual harassment policy, I see it was last, do I understand this correctly, it was last revised in 2009, that's the date that's on the top of the of the policy. Oh no, revision date, I'm sorry, revision date is December 15th, 2021, I apologize for that, I was looking at the wrong box. Notwithstanding that date, though. We also have for county council, a code of conduct which reinforces a lot of these principles. And because this policy is one of intentionality and values. I wonder if there's a space in there that we could say, you know, county council is additionally beholden to the corresponding code of conduct, which we have all signed at the beginning of term, just to reinforce the importance of that. Because the code of conduct doesn't make an appearance here, but it is an important piece of our commitment as council.
Comments?
Respectfully, it is a policy that we have here at the county and it was part of our orientation. Following the last election, so it was on the learning management system, so many members accepted it electronically as part of that course. But I'd be happy to include it in reports going forward, whatever the direction is of council.
I need to hear from other members of council whether they think that that's appropriate or not, required. I've seen one head nodding. Okay, there's, so if we could add that to, does that mean we all need to sign the document again?
No. It might, Madam Warden, so it's just, it'd be like, it would be included in the policy as, as almost like a preamble that would talk about the commitment to providing the safe work environment as evidenced by, and it would be a preamble piece. Would not be part of the policy, it'd be a preamble.
Okay, so could I have a mover and a sec, or then to confirm the policy and Counselors Fury and Carter?
Be resolved, the Halliburton County Council acknowledges receipt of report CLK 01 2024 regarding the 2024 Health and Safety Annual Policy Review. And that Halliburton County Council confirms that the 2024 Health and Safety Policy Statement, Health and Safety Duties and Responsibilities Policy and Workplace Violence Harassment Sexual Harassment Policy were reviewed as required by the policy and or under the Occupational Health and Safety Act.
All in favor? That's carried? I think that, thank you, Michelle. I think that we could look at the passing the bylaw to amend the speed limit on the Morgan Road, so if I could have a mover and a sec on that bylaw, Counselors Burton and Carter?
Be resolved, the bylaw 4228 being a bylaw to amend the County of Halliburton Speed Limit by law number 3392, which prescribes a rate of speed for motor vehicles on certain roads under the jurisdiction of the County of Halliburton be considered to be read a first, second, and third time. And finally passed and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried? So we have nothing left on the agenda but the budget discussion. And the confirming bylaw in adjournment, so I'm not sure how we would proceed, I guess we'll go ahead and you can do your, we can do one of two things, go ahead and have your introduction and then our discussion after the kids are here.
Yeah, with, sorry, with your discretion, I can do my introductory part, which is, it's separate from what Ms. Robinson is gonna do. So I think that may work that way, but that'll fill the, not quite the 20 minutes, but fill that time.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll break until they get here and then resume after, after they've made their presentation. Over to you, Mr. Dyke.
Thank you, Madam Warden, just for, for a background and outline of what we're trying to achieve today. Is that the presentation that you'll be getting today, it kind of, it builds upon our January 24th presentation. And hopefully addresses some of the questions raised at that meeting and the intervening time period between 24th and today. And also we've taken to that some clarification with respect to how the budget was developed, some of the thought process went by and where we came up with our numbers going forward. And so along those lines, I think it's important for, for council and everybody to be aware that our budget process actually began in the late summer of 2023. When the department started looking forward based on their work plans, things going forward. And putting together their growth items that they feel they need to go forward, plus the carryover items, inflationary factors. And things of that nature, and sorry, and principally the base of what the core services we provide. When that initial draft came back, and this is unusual, we're looking at about a 10.5% rate increase based on all those factors being put in, which just, this is what we think we need to do. Staff were directed at that point to go back and find sustainable efficiencies, and so the question came up before about do we do zero-based budgeting, the short answer is no, we don't, because there's some difficulties in doing that within the structure we're within. But when we start looking at efficiencies and review the operations, so it's if you're looking to add X number of dollars, one of the challenges, or the challenges back to the directors is okay. You need to find how much of that can we pay with existing money and mitigate any request of new money. And a lot of that deals with finding your efficiencies going forward. But from my perspective, trying to avoid the psycho, just kind of kicking the can down the road into subsequent budget years is create a program by which we look at sustainable savings. And so that means it's a minimum of three years, so if you're gonna take some under the budget, if it can't be sustained for at least three-year period, okay, we're gonna have to look at a different way of doing things, because it's, you just, all you're doing is exacerbating the problem as, as you go down the road. And so under those guidelines, coming back, staff came back and identified just a little under $578,000 in savings. And which is, was considerable reduction, but appreciative of that, some of the stuff that we would have liked to done X or Y in the area, but we didn't. And we also went through, and as council is aware and will be part of the presentation later, is we've actually reprioritized some of our spending. We shifted vacant positions that were at the more senior administrative level, reinvested that money in frontline staff to, to increase the service level by, by re-prioritizing how we spend money going forward. Again, based on discussions on the 24th. We, staff went back again under the same criteria. And the caveat, we were discussed at the senior management level again was that we're go to the point of where any further reduction is a change in the service level. Right, and if we get to that point, then that's a conversation we have to have with council as a whole, that if we go to this number, it's a service level change. And it's a more directed, specific discussion. We were able to find an additional $61,000 in savings or efficient, I call them savings more efficiencies, is probably a better word. Going forward, and that's where we arrived at the 7.8 percent, sorry. I'm sorry, 7.6 rate increase, that's before council right now is in the draft budget. I think it's important to note that, and I know Ms. Robinson brought it up in, in the last meeting, I think it's worth reiterating for everybody is of the increase, levy increase going forward, which is roughly around, you know, $1.9 million increase. 94% of that ask is items out of the control of the current budget year, they're either items that were directly fit by inflationary costs, were previous decisions of council, were carryover decisions from 2023. Or more importantly, money we have to pay out to external agencies, because we have no control over their increase, direct increase. And so that represents 94% of the increase, so only 6% or $126,000 is actually the increased cost for us to manage and administer the programs and services on behalf of the, on behalf of county council, I think it's an important piece to recognize. So Ms. Robinson, in her conference, in her presentation, we'll get into much more detail in the specific areas, I'm talking the global pieces, but I think it's important from my perspective too. And this is probably a message council has heard before, as the, the challenges that we face at the municipal level in financing services, infrastructure investments, things of that nature. You know, every year, the, the, the level of, of challenge gets greater. And so which limits our ability to invest and we're forced to make choices between, you know, libraries, roads, this service, that service to mitigate the impact on the rate pair, because I mean, at the end of the day, that is one thing we have to keep in mind, there, there is ability to pay and there are thresholds to pay. And we're in a two-tier structure, because what we do, it trickles down to the local matter, so we, it's very important that we take a good look at the prioritization of how we spend, I think this, the senior management team and council at this point has done a really good job in that and actually taking those factors into play. As evidenced by $620,000 in efficiencies were found in this year's budget to be brought back to council, so it wasn't just like, here it is, council, deal with it. We understand our responsibility and your responsibility at both levels to try to reduce the, the money we're asking for in, in the reserve. And despite these efforts, you know, there's, I think it's important that us as staff members and, and council as well, that we start looking towards an increased advocacy into provincial government to reexamine the partnership, the municipal, provincial, financial partnership arrangement that currently exists, it's a broken system. It's a system that was established over 50 years ago. If that's been modified going forward, and what's the problem is, is you had, it's like, it was like gas prices, they jack them way up and they pull them back and you think they've actually reduced them, but you're still higher than they were when they first raised them, is that there's, they down, there was a significant level of downloading from the province during, during the Mike Harris government. And then they pulled certain things back. But the municipalities are still subsidizing the provincial, provincial services, both primary in healthcare and housing and social services are being actually, we're actually, it's in reverse, we're actually subsidizing the province on how things go forward. And from an operational standpoint, we've, we've seen significant decreases in our OSIF funding, OMPF is almost non-existent now. So we have no consistency in infrastructure money coming from the senior level of government, so we're playing this whack-a-mole game where we think there's a program coming, we'll gotta get a whole bunch of shovel, shovel right projects together. And it's, it's a terrible way to fiscal plan for something in an organization of our size, but that's what we're forced with. You know, I know the subject libraries came up today and I, just that always sticks in my head, is that the province has not increased the level of funding for libraries in Ontario since 1998. That was the last time they, that was the number they still use, so 2024, we're still using 1998 number. But the piece the province forgets to tell everybody, between 97, 98, they dropped the funding level by 20%. So we're actually, the number is actually worse than, than that, so that's the type of relationship we have now with the province. And the bigger piece of it is we're significantly hamstrung by the fact we can't collect money. We have one principal way to collect money and that's the property tax. And it's in that friskal framework, it's, it's a regressive tax, it has no bearing on how much money you make, how much worth, it's your property, and particularly this is an extreme issue, issue in, in our area because of the success of our area is actually contributing to some of the problems we're facing, and it's fact is that we have considerable tourism piece in there, there's some very valuable properties, and because it's a market value assessment system, it drives up the assessment value for everybody across the way with no discernible relationship to how much somebody's ability to pay us. And, and so that is, and secondly, because we can only collect through the property tax, when we're in periods of because we can only collect through the property tax, when we're in periods of, of good economic growth, our revenue stream doesn't grow with the economy. It remains static, right? And so, and, and that's, that's one of the, the problems we have are relatively static. And so in Ontario, and the problem is to have is, the average in Ontario was forty percent of the revenues collected by the municipality is, is actually comes from property tax. So just about half of the revenues coming in is property tax. Halliburton is, is actually in a worse situation than that. Seventy-one percent of our revenues come from property tax. There are other areas of revenue that we don't collect that would offset the reliance on the property tax. And on top of the before is the municipalities in Ontario currently invest between sixty-four and sixty-eight billion dollars in services, other provinces are provide, in other provinces are provided by the province. So that's the subsidization factor, sixty-four billion dollars across Ontario is, is submitted by the local municipalities. And so in Ontario, which is arguably the most affluent and, and, and well-established province, we rang last of all ten provinces in the amount of money provided from the provincial government to invest in municipalities. It's dead last. We're looking at they, we only receive, I might have forgotten to write this number now, it's roughly about eleven thousand dollars per capita from the provincial government into, into the Ontario municipalities, which is last by quite a ways within the province. And so the, the municipal investment in areas around housing, social services, and infrastructure is actually outpaces the grants in Ontario by over, by almost four billion dollars. So I mean, it's, it's a financial system that's broken. And so AMO is doing a very good job right now, and they're, they're pressuring the provincial government to sit down and revisit the financial framework. And this is, it's the longest time it's been, bit of a third rail in, in, in politics in Ontario, is that we, we need to move off the property tax system as the sole way of funding municipal operations, or the principal way of funding municipal operations. It's been tried multiple times, but it hasn't, it just gets started, and there's a lot of opposition, and it backs off. It'd be nice if we get more into consumptive tax basis, back tax basis, which it's based on income earned, it's based on other things. Because you imagine, again, in our municipalities, you have, our population doubles on a seasonal basis, and the people coming in, yes, they're investing in, in the local economy, but it doesn't trickle down into the money we need to invest in the services they demand, or the pressure they put on the services that we do have. So it's, it's something we need to look at. And I think it's important to say that, as I mentioned before, is the property tax system was first introduced to municipalities in Ontario in seventeen-ninety-three. That's how long it's been around. And it was modified in, 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 in the, in the late sixties, and then modified again in the nineties, where we transitioned over into the market value assessment versus the, the, the assessed value model, which is well. So anyways, it's one of those things, I think that it's, I would, as, as part of our, our discussions going forward, is a continued action through the East Ontario Wardens Caucus, through AMO, through Roma, any organization that, that's applicable, that we continue to support any effort to, to force the province or get the province to the table to reevaluate the financial framework we have, because the property tax system in seventeen-ninety-three never envisioned municipality spending billions of dollars on infrastructure. And that's where we're at now. So we're looking at a three-hundred-year-old system, trying to wedge it into twenty-twenty-four needs. And so that's, I'll jump off my soapbox now, and that's my, my commentary on, on the financial. But I think it's important that, yes, operationally, we have a very, I think we have a very solid budget, but it's to the point now where that's what we're pushing up against, is it's the, it's the framework we're forced to work within, is causing, having us to make interesting decisions on our, on servicing choices.
Interesting. Comments? Councillor Carter?
Interesting. You know, one of the other things that I think is important is that in those two-hundred-and-fifty years, the various levels of senior levels of government have decided to pass the odd law and add a few extra regulations to what it is that, that we have responsibility for. For instance, you know, the Ministry, Minister of Environment has all sorts of rules about what you do with waste and, and so on, and necessarily so. But we are all in this situation where our next step forward in terms of being able to handle the growth in the communities on infrastructure, you know, we're in a situation where we didn't really need that in the past. You know, these huge amounts of money to help pay for the infrastructure. But now, you know, something like development fees are almost totally necessary for us, because our, you know, as we've seen in the, in the last couple of years, the amount of money we've had to spend in infrastructure goes up, partially because we have to catch up, but partially because rules change. But now, if we have to do things like change our, our wastewater treatment centers, we're talking in the, you know, into the, you know, it's eight figures sort of thing, you know, tens, twenty million dollars. And, you know, the only way we're going to be able to get that is by availing ourselves of some of the other revenues that we haven't in the past, such as development fees. So.
Which have been taken, our ability to charge them has been taken away to some extent.
This is, this is an issue. And, you know, the, the, the growth in rural Ontario is an awful lot more difficult than it is in other areas where you're making marginal increases in some of the infrastructure, where we have to, you know, basically start and build infrastructure where none existed in the past. And so, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that we find some of those revenues.
One of the, one of the pieces, again, is one of the big, the, the big pushes before, is all the rest of us need are the same access to the powers that currently exist under the City of Toronto Act. They, they need to balance the playing field. Like, they can't say, when it was first set up, yes, Toronto was, Toronto is different. It's, I think they have the second-largest budget in Canada, let alone outside of Ontario. But they have powers to tax, they have powers to raise funds that are currently prohibited from us. And the one that comes forward, and I'm not advocating this, using this as an example, is when Kathleen Lynn was premier, they floated the idea of municipalities getting a portion of the land transfer tax, a pure consumptive tax. It's like, it's not, and it takes the burden off every, and so, in forgiveness, using a, a previous municipality, in Cambridge, we carried about a hundred-and-forty-six million dollar infrastructure gap or debt at the municipality. In three and a half years of one percent of the land transfer tax, we would have eradicated that debt. And that's with zero dollars, additional dollars coming from the residential taxpayer. They got quashed for any number of reasons, well, past judgment, I've got cost, but those are the type of things, the City of Toronto currently collects, they collect one percent of the land transfer tax, the Tron goes to the City of Toronto. And so there, there's opportunities there, however they may be structured, that we, that needs to be looked at for us to, to remain sustainable over the next number of years.
So it would, it would appear to me that one of the things that we need to really think about is, is doing a better job in our advocacy. I mean, we, we've got AMO coming up, and we probably need to put some, some, you know, real good thinking into the kinds of delegations that we make. Councillor Daye, then Councillor Rayo?
Yeah, my, my thoughts were very much along those lines. You know, AMO is a great organization. I'm sure they're doing a very good job on this. They represent a lot of us. And if we had a, a, a made-in-Halliburton version of how, how this problem manifests for us, that could be helpful for us and also for AMO moving ahead. The, the really specific details that, that others may not be aware of, it'd be good to, to write them down, because this is an excellent overview for us and the public.
Councillor Rayo?
Yeah, I'd like to say everything is getting better, but I think the worst is yet to come. There's information related to the, the potential HKPR merger, which obviously I, we can't really discuss today. But what I can tell you is that in twenty-twenty-five, whether the merger goes through or the merger does not go through, there is going to be a significant increase for subsidization, because the province is not coming to the table with a lot. So having said that, you know, like I said, there's still a lot of stuff being developed about that, and it's not a done deal. But either way, we are going to feel the impact in twenty-twenty-five.
Whether we like it or not, Councillor Carter, then Councillor Fearing?
So over the last little while, I, at Roma and, and after, I started, I've asked some of the people, MPs and MPs, you know, is there any value to all of these motions that we pass, where we write a letter and we copy it to people, or we make a delegation and, and, you know, the, the ministry listens to us? And the, I, I don't think it's a, you know, was a self-serving answer, but universally, everybody said yes. You know, those repeated messages that are coming from bodies such as municipalities or counties or so on, those are, those resonate in people's minds with, that when they are in a meeting, you know, they're in a budget meeting of the, of a, of, at the cabinet, and they say, you know, hey, we've been getting this, you know, we've been hearing from municipalities that they want this. So the value of those delegations, I think we should put an increased effort into doing it. And the same thing with those resolutions that get passed, they are listened to, and they, they, they move things to top of mind, because they, they can't not read them. And just the fact that they read them sort of gets it in, into their mind space. And I, so I think it's important. And, you know, we haven't traditionally talked to the Ministry of Finance or the whomever. We should find out, you know, what are the five things that we want, and who are the people responsible? Because I think this time, the Ministry of Infrastructure, that was an interesting meeting, and as somebody that we never, you know, and we never usually talk to, so.
I'm glad to hear that they are actually listening. I thought you were going to say no. I really did. Councillor Fearing?
I think that Gary's remarks about the land transfer tax are kind of mind-boggling to me, that it's not, not much money. So why wouldn't the Eastern Ontario Wardens and the Western Ontario Wardens, that's a huge lobby, lobby group, go after the province? I, they, they will have influence, those two areas.
If I might. Yeah, so they are. So the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and the Western Wardens Caucus are having conversations on that. AMO has a full drive going forward. A lot of the statistics I was giving came from the AMO project. I will share this week with council, the, the, the pre-budget submission made by AMO that talks about the inadequacies or the inefficiencies in funding models back to the province. I haven't heard what kind of reaction they're getting from the province going forward, as you can appreciate, as hard as we're going to lobby for things like increased rev, or modified revenue sharing, there's another side that's, that's saying it shouldn't be done. But I think the more effort we put into, and I think what's happened is, the, kind of the one benefit for the hyperinflation we went through coming out of COVID, is that it really smacked a lot of municipalities in the face with respect to the sustainability numbers they have when you drop an unknown in like that, where all of a sudden you go from standardized inflation, all of a sudden you're dealing with, you know, five or six on a global scale, when you look at the specialized services we support and pay for, we're looking at inflation anywhere from twelve to twenty-four percent on certain areas, depending on what we're doing. And so it's, there's starting, there's a lot of movement now where we are looking at thresholding onto, onto, onto the rate pairs. And similar to a, a comment made earlier, if some of the larger ticket items that should be provincially funded, it's, it's something that's spread across the entire province, not expecting a municipality of the size of Halliburton County to pick up the lion's share of whatever the service may be that should be a federally mandated service. So it, it's, it's a, it's a pushing a great big rock, rock up a really steep hill. But I think, to your point, Councillor Fearing is, yeah, absolutely. Whatever voice gets you in front of the province is the one we should take advantage of.
Councillor Fearing?
One more thing that would help. We, we have to pressure, a lot more pressure to get the market value assessment up to date. Like, we're losing, at the, at the lower tier, I estimate, we're losing millions in Dijon. And if we have more money, then we're, we're not so starved at that level, and that's gives a little bit of freedom to the upper tier. So I, I think we really need to put the heat on there. I mean, it's way overdue. It's really bad.
They're, they're still running on a twenty-sixteen assessed value, market value assessment. So, yep.
I believe that our guests are here. So we'll stop our budget discussion at this point in time and, and ask them to come on into their room. Thank you. Did they acknowledge your? We're not sure what their presentation is about, so. Oh, you missed the, the years of advocacy for a pool in Halliburton County. It was pretty heavy-duty for a while. Good to see I agreed with them. Yes, we are. Sure, if you did. Welcome. This is a special opportunity for us, as I know it's a special opportunity for you. And, and just so the public is aware, we have the grade five class, I think you are, from the Archie Stouffer School, and they're going to be making a presentation to us. And they're also going to be hearing a little bit about how, what we do here. So welcome to you all. We're just really excited about having you here today. This is a first for us all. Absolutely. I'll, I'll turn it over to our CIO, Mr. Dyke, who's going to talk a little bit about what we do here.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Your slide deck? So we, we're, represent the, the County of Halliburton, and so we are a relatively large organization. We have eighty-five full-time and forty-two, forty-two employees. We provide over twenty different services to our community, plowing your roads, you know, permits to build, sorry, inspections on the roads, accountants and services, forestry services as well, across six different departments. Next slide, please. So our departments are based on, so I'm the chief administrator officer. I report directly to council this group here. And we're, so I'm responsible for the employee, the administration and management of the services that we do provide through six different departments. So our IT department and Mr. March is in charge of all our, all our IT services, which are computers, our telephones, our, our smartphones, things of that nature, making sure to communicate with each other. Our planning, planning director is responsible for how the community grows moving forward. Economic Development Tourism is supporting our businesses in the community, as well as on the tourism side of things, including some really cool things around TVs and movies that. Economic Development Tourism is supporting our businesses in the community as well as on the tourism side of things, including some really cool things around TVs and movies that come to film in our area. Corporate Services is kind of the heart of the organization. That's Ms. Robinson with respect to our finances. The Clerks Department and and things and Human Resources, things of that nature, make sure everybody gets paid. Public Works, Mr. Cluche here is with respect to make sure the roads are plowed, the bridges are built, and the ditches are cleaned out. And lastly, Emergency Management Services is Mr. Wait here, who handles the paramedics and the ambulances and areas, provide the the health services as well. Next slide, please. And so if you're looking to where you want to be a career, municipalities is the place to go. We we employ a lot of different orient pieces in here as well. We are engineers, planners, I was a planner by education, mechanics, paramedics, equipment operators, accountants. And the list is even bigger. And some municipalities employ nurses, doctors, and things of that nature. So it's it's quite the breadth of services we have here. There are no firefighters on our list because that's provided at local municipal level, but firefighters is another one that a key service provided across municipalities. Back to you, your warden.
Just just a little bit more on on county council. We're made up of representatives from each of the four municipalities. So we have the mayor and deputy mayor from Highlands East. The mayor and deputy mayor from Minden Hills, the mayor and deputy mayor from Dicard Adal, and the mayor and deputy mayor of Algonquin Highlands. And and I'm the I'm the warden. My name is Liz Danielson. And we we choose our warden annually. So that's that's kind of a little bit about us so that you know that that. Wherever you live in the county, you have representation here on on specific things that Mr. Dyke has outlined. Things like roads and emergency measures and EMS services and and he's he's given you the outline. So that that's a little bit about what we do. But I understand more importantly that you have a presentation to make to us for us to hear and maybe make a decision about. So over to you.
So yeah, our class is working as part of our social study unit. We kind of put ourselves to. Kind of put ourselves into political parties and the platform is the initiative that they wanted to get done around the community. So they've been working really hard in their groups and we actually had our vote. Another class was able to hear our presentations. And they voted for which initiative we're going to try and accomplish in the community. So we didn't think we'd have time for all five groups to present. So they have all brought their posters that they hung up so the classes could see the week before. And then they gave their presentations. So we do have our winning group could come up and kind of discuss what their initiative is that they wanted to accomplish. And we're going to try and take that on with the rest of the year. So you guys want to give it a shot here?
I'm nervous, I know.
Don't be nervous. We don't bite. So tell us about your initiative. If you want to step forward just a little bit, we need you to speak into the microphone because the whole world is listening. The Halliburton County world, anyway, not the whole world.
We're raising money for the Senior Living Center.
Okay, who, Elena or later, Alfie or Commenter, me or Co-Captain, Kate and Kira are writers and authors.
Why? The fundraiser for Senior Living Center so they can get food and other stuff they need.
What? We're selling chips for $1 per bag. Where? The tuck shop at the gym.
What? First resist on Fridays and Fridays.
How? How will it?
They will plant a flower outside. Mondays and Fridays, you can come down to the tuck shop in the gym. They will sell chips there for $1 per bag.
That's really it.
Right. Good God.
Awesome. Yeah, so they wanted to donate all the money they make with the fundraiser to the Senior Living Center. We had awesome initiatives. All of all five of them were really strong and ways that could help the community. Does the party leader of each one or whoever has the sign want to just say what your initiative was that you were going for? Ashley, what was your group? You guys are going to clean up litter around Minden. So we would all go out and clean up the environment the best we could. We had Jonathan, your group.
Uh, there was help for homeless.
To help the homeless. So we were going to fundraise for a homeless shelter around. What was that shelter called?
Um, it's called Home.
It's called Home. And then we had, who am I missing? Ethan, your group, Holden.
Our group was prepared to fundraise.
So all the money was going to go to cancer research. What group am I missing? Ron? Oh, Ron, go ahead.
I mean, I.
Yeah, and they wanted to raise awareness for the animal shelter as well and put up pictures of animals that needed homes as well. So that was a pretty cool idea. I think that's all, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did an awesome job with this. It's a shame not all five could win, but it was good.
Well, it is a shame that all five can't win. And in a way, you are all winners because you've really come up with some great ideas. Some really fabulous initiatives that need to be taken care of in the community. And and some of those things are the things that we work on here or that the lower tiers. Or the the other municipalities look after as well. So I'm really proud of the work that you've done. And and I think you've really come up with some fabulous ideas and and I would like to congratulate the winners. Do any members of council have questions? Counselor Shell.
I have a question to the team that won. How long is your initiative going to run for? And how much money have you raised so far to give to the senior center?
Other questions, Counselor Carter.
Well, I just think it's really important that you all know that. We as elected officials and the people who work for the towns and and the the county. We aren't the people that do everything. You know, we really need this type of initiative, these types of ideas. And this type of volunteerism. It's really important in any community that we have volunteers. Who take some of their time and donate it to their community because you, with these five ideas. Can make the whole community a better place to live. And you're doing it by yourself. And that's really important. And I applaud you for that.
Counselor Rayo.
Yeah, I I'm the chair of the Dogtown Board, which is in the eastern side of the county. And for those of you guys, if I understand, you're you're trying to raise some money for 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 animals. If your teacher has a report or if you guys put together a report. If you want to send it to me, I'd be really interested in reading to see if it could help what we do.
That that would be great. I think they'd really be interested in that. I know that was a real close second as well. Lots of interest in helping the animals. And everyone in our class was very interested in being part of that group. So, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Just another thing for you all to keep in mind. I know it's really early and I mean, you're you're young. And you're not necessarily ready to decide what you want to do when you grow up or what kind of education you might want. But it really is a fabulous opportunity to work for one of the townships or for the county. They're really good jobs. They help the entire community. And and I think that you'd find it would be something really rewarding to do. So just something for you to think about. And this is a good example for you to see kind of how we operate. We have people come in and and ask us for things or give us suggestions and we talk about it and ask questions and make decisions as best we can. That's kind of what our role is. But if you were working for a municipality, then you would help us in that regard, which would be really great. Do we have a resolution that receiving the delegation or presentation or no? So normally, we might pass a resolution that would formally accept the presentation that you've made. But this is something that's completely unique and special. So I'd just like on behalf of council to thank you all for the work that you've done. For the community initiatives and and your willingness to try and help the community in so many different ways. We really appreciate it. And thank you so much for bringing the students here. I think this was really a worthwhile experience. It was certainly for us.
Definitely for us too. And thank you so much for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
So we're going to carry on with our meeting. The students are welcome to stay or, you know, if you want to head out at this point. I mean, it's it's up to you.
Okay. I mean, I think we'll we'll head out and leave you guys to it. Thank you so much.
Counselor Rayo.
Warden, can I have permission to give my contact information?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Well, I I think Cease might be looking. Okay, well, we'll carry on with the rest of our of our agenda, starting with the the budget discussion. Over to Mrs. Robinson.
Madam Warden, just before we start, you know, I. That would be interesting if we would, you know, communicate that we should look at trying to get other grades. To come through at both, you know, from both the high school and and the other grades of elementary school. Because like those kids had to put some work into that and to think. And 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 to to generate something and, you know, and and the high school. You know, you're getting closer to people who may be able to work for you even in summer jobs. And, you know, I think we should, you know, write a letter to try to encourage that.
I think that's a great idea. You know, actually, I I was kind of tempted to say, let's hear all five of your presentations. But I didn't want to put them on the spot if they weren't expecting to do that. So hopefully, we can ask ask for some follow-up there with the with the schools. I think that's a great idea. Especially for some of the older kids who are starting to think about what they want to do. That's right. Counselor Rayo.
Yeah, and I think too, one of the things that we're we're finding across, I'm sure in our municipality, across all of them. It's difficult to get volunteers today. Like, like, people are getting older. Most of your volunteers are sixty-plus. To get them ten, twelve, interested in something, who are willing to to work with 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 what's passionate to them. Whether they work for the municipality in their in their later years. That would be a good thing. But if you want to get them involved in the community, you want to get them involved with the municipality. You want to get them involved as young as they can so they find out interesting and challenging. So, yeah, I really support that.
And and, you know, if you think of the initiatives there, okay, maybe the maybe the 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 dog and cats are, you know. Are a little obvious, but we're talking about seniors, talking about cancer, we're talking about homelessness. I mean, we're talking about some major issues. And, you know, for fifth graders to be aware and actually talking about these things. I think that 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 gives one hope.
I think I can honestly say that that is the best delegation or presentation that county council has received. Really, it's just. You know, when you think about it, just fabulous. Before before Andrea starts, I just wanted to say. That I I'm hoping today that if any members of council have got ideas or thoughts about things that they'd like to see change. Today would be the day to bring that up. I'd like us to have as fulsome a discussion as we can. Now, I know that we're going to, we are going to defer. The actual budget approval to March the sixth. And that there will be some review and recommendations coming back from Counselors Fury and Carter. But it would probably help them if they heard from other members of council where where their thinking is and what what we might accept or. Or not accept in in, you know, what they might bring back to us. So let's have as fulsome a discussion as we can on this today. And having said that, over to you, Andrea.
Great. Thank you, Warden. Good morning. I wanted to take some time to provide some further follow-up from draft one. And discuss the changes that we've made moving into draft number two. Next slide, please. The first draft of the 2024 budget presented January 24th included a total levy requirement. Twenty-three million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. This was an increase of $2,036,694 from 2023. And an additional cost for the rate payer of $18.41 per hundred thousand of residential assessment. Next slide, please. Follow-up from the discussions on January 24th. $100,000 has been added to the budget for community transit, being fully funded from the community transit reserve for any expenses that may arise in the 2024. Sorry, that may arise in 2024 for this program. That has no impact on the levy as it's being funded from reserves. There was a concern that we may not have enough monies allocated for the Community Safety and Well-Being Program. Especially if the Police Services Board was established. As we heard this morning, that has happened since the presentation of draft one. So we have added $20,000 to the Community Safety and Well-Being Budget for that purpose. That $20,000 addition is offset by the removal of the recruiter budget of $30,000, which I will speak to later in the presentation. Also, the 2023 Community Safety and Well-Being Budget has approximately $10,000 in unspent monies, which can also be transferred to reserve for future use if required. Climate change. There was concern with the departure of our climate change coordinator that the county's climate change programs and initiatives would not continue. As included in the CIO's report, the pre-approved food cycler program with a budget of $83,000. Is included in the 2024 budget, plus an additional $12,200 for the administration of the Corporate Climate Change Mitigation Plan. Since the presentation on the 24th, the question was raised if the $55,000 contribution to the Yoot Links Water Quality Program was included. This has been included under the Planning Cost Center and is being fully funded from reserves as this is a one-time expense and therefore has no levy impact. Next slide, please. Continuing with draft one follow-up, there were some questions around the addition of the EMS supervisors. The CIO also included in his report that these type of supervisory positions are the industry norm, with Halliburton being the only Eastern Ontario service without them. Staff are finding it more and more difficult to meet the increasing legislative responsibilities required by the province. And as the county's call volumes continue to rise, these positions will assist with enhancing frontline patient care. Reduce the 24/7 on-call burden on our senior management team and enhance focus on long-term planning. I want to remind council that these positions, like all land ambulance operating expenses, would be 50% funded by the province starting in 2025. Next slide, please. The question was raised, you know, why two supervisors? Could we start with one? This slide provides a visual for council as to what two versus one looks like. With running a 24/7 service, a total of four supervisors will be required to have full coverage 24/7. In an attempt to phase in the cost, the chief has budgeted for two supervisors in 2024. And this will provide seven, seven-day-a-week coverage for 12 hours a day. Although we could start with just one supervisor and phase in from there, this this slide provides council that image showing. this, this slide provides council that image showing the, the gaps that that coverage would leave. Next slide, please. There were questions as to what departments were included with what divisions and/or department-specific budgets. The county reports based on seven divisions are reporting was set up like this a number of years ago to be in line with the ministry's annual, annual reporting requirements, our financial information return. The divisions we report under are those identified by the ministry. This and the following slides are the updated summarized cost centers. When you're looking at this slide and the divisions to follow, please note that the amortization expenses budget has been removed as it doesn't affect the levy. And also, the transfers from reserves are included in the revenue numbers. Division O one O or general government includes the cost centers for general administration, IT, our admin, land registry and daycare buildings, health professional recruitment, council, community safety and wellbeing, accessibility and our M-PAC levy. Next slide, please. Division O two O or protection to persons and property includes our nine-one-one budget, our shoreline preservation bylaw budget, which is recoverable by Highlands East, Algonquin Highlands and Minden Hills. It also includes the budget for recoveries from Dizart for bylaw thirty-five oh five or the shoreline tree protection bylaw and the county's tree preservation bylaw enforcement budget for contracted forester. Next slide, please. Division O three O or transportation is the budget for public, the public works department, which includes rail trail, roads, general maintenance, roads capital, structures capital, patrol yards, the public works fleet, engineering and overhead. The overhead includes the debt and interest payments for the county's three million and four point one five two million debentures. Next slide, please. Division O five O or health includes the budgets for a land ambulance and community paramedicine programs, emergency management and the county's health unit levy. Next slide, please. Division O six O or social services and housing includes the budgets for just that, the county's social services and housing contributions paid to the city of Corthe Lakes, along with any local initiatives such as the development of the We Care property. Next slide, please. Division O seven O or recreation and culture includes only the library budget. And next slide. Our final division, division O eight O or planning and development, includes planning and land division, broadband, economic development and tourism, climate change, community transportation and the LIDAR project. Next slide, please. Staff included in the first draft of the presentation that the initial draft budget developed by the senior management team in the fall included a tax rate increase of ten point four four percent and that after further analysis and review, sustainable reductions had been made in the amount of almost six hundred thousand dollars. I've included in this slide a summary of those reductions. Under general government, we decrease the estimated insurance renewal, decreases to mileage, small tools and equipment and programming to a net total of twenty-one thousand, five hundred. Under transportation, a net decrease of two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, which is the result of reorganization of positions and a decrease to the roads maintenance budget. Under health, due to the recent four-four-three-five settlement, there was a need to increase the meal budget line. However, there were decreases made to right-size heat, small tools and equipment and internet budget lines. One training day was also removed and the decision to fund the new EA position through the long sorry, long-term care, community paramedic program as this position will be utilized for that program. That was a total net decrease of forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Under social services and housing, we had originally budgeted a hundred thousand dollar transfer to the Affordable Housing Reserve, which has been removed as we are now utilizing a hundred thousand dollars from that reserve to fund any potential expenses with the development of the We Care property. Under planning and development, a net of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars was removed from the budget. These were decreases from training, advertising, office supplies, the removal of a cloud permitting software purchase and the reorganization of a position. Next slide, please. Moving on from draft number one, staff have gone back to review their budgets again as council requested at the last meeting and have made further adjustments for draft two. Under general government, staff have made the adjustments to the actual insurance renewal numbers for all departments. We've removed the thirty thousand dollar in recruiter fees that was budgeted for the recruitment of the director of planning and the director of public works. We utilized a portion of that thirty thousand dollars as previously mentioned to add twenty thousand to the community safety and wellbeing budget for the new OPP detachment board. As council were supportive of the recommendation of the one percent dedicated capital reserve levy, staff have included this in the recommendation for the draft two budget approval. Under transportation, we provided further decreases in materials, supplies and hired equipment with a net total of eleven thousand, five hundred. Planning and development, economic development and tourism were able to add an additional ten thousand dollars of twenty twenty-three savings from wages to help offset the twenty twenty-four budget. I do want to note that this does assist with twenty twenty-four, but will be a catch-up item for twenty twenty-five. Library, the insurance renewal actuals provided a savings for the library of one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. In draft one of the budget, council were notified of the additional ask from, from the library in an amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. As council heard this morning, that has been confirmed by the CEO that the board is requesting an additional twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, next slide, please. Going back to the four main categories that staff were tasked to develop their budgets under, provides council a visual of where the majority of the levy increase is being seen. Catch-up items account for almost fifty-three percent of the levy increase. They're items such as loss of funding, the end result of phasing in new positions or programs or utilizing reserves to cover operational items. Draft two includes one point zero five two million dollars in catch-up items with just over six hundred and eighty thousand in lost funding from Safe Restart, OCIF, OMPF and the EOR and Cell Gap funding. Along with an additional three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for debenture payments, as twenty twenty-two unused payments were used to fund the twenty twenty-three debenture payments, leaving the gap for twenty twenty-four. Inflation increases account for thirty-four point three percent of the total levy increase. This includes increases in operational materials, supplies and premiums, capital roads construction and inflationary increases to our transfers to other entities. I've also included with this figure for draft two presentation is the net base budget adjustment figures, which includes such things as the wage and benefit increases. Pre-approvals of council for new items account for eighteen point nine percent of the levy increase, which includes the four-four-three-five meal allowance, increase, increased audit fees, increased consultant fees and managed forests and, and weeds control program, the second rental unit for your health professional recruitment and the Triple H S C T machine contribution. Also included in this category but have little or no impact on the levy due to being funded by reserves. Our funds for the development of the We Care property, rentals at eleven and twelve Newcastle Street and contribution to the Ute Links Water Quality Program. As reported with draft one, due to the increased land ambulance funding for twenty twenty-four, the growth column actually nets to a negative impact on the twenty twenty-four levy increase. The only change to report here other, from draft one is the addition of the twenty thousand dollars to the community safety and wellbeing budget. Next slide, please. With the draft two updates, it is anticipated at this time that the county will end twenty twenty-four with approximately seven point three five million in reserves, which includes the one percent dedicated capital reserve levy. Of the three, uh, seven point three five million balance, just over four million is for committed projects and or purchases. Next slide, please. I wanted to recap on this slide that was included in the first draft's presentation as it's important to recognize how the decisions made within the twenty twenty-four budget process impact the following years. Staff have utilized reserves along with phasing in new positions in an effort to reduce the, the required levy in twenty twenty-four. Knowing items that should be brought to council's attention for potential impacts in twenty twenty-five and beyond are included on this slide. There are nearly four hundred thousand dollars in identified items that would affect the operational budget in twenty twenty-five. As mentioned with my draft one presentation, there is a need to start to build a sustainable capital structure budget into the county's base budget. And this program was fully funded by the federal and provincial grants, but as Gary spoke to this, earlier this morning, have drastically decreased, decreased over the years. And last year was fully funded with debt from the county. Sorry, next slide, was in track of what I'm doing. The second draft of the budget that staff are requesting approval of today includes a total levy requirement of twenty-three million, five hundred and eighty thousand, hundred and twelve dollars. This is an increase of just over one point nine million dollars from twenty twenty-three and is an additional cost of seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents per hundred thousand dollars of residential assessment for the rate payer. As mentioned by the CIO earlier, one point eight, one point eight six nine million or ninety-four percent of the levy increase is made up of inflation, catch-up items or transfers to other entities. Draft two, as presented today, equates to seven point six two percent tax rate increase. Should council wish to approve the library's additional request of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred, that would be a seven point seven three percent tax rate increase. As previously mentioned, included with staff's recommendation for approval is the one percent dedicated capital levy being a total cost to the rate payer of twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents per hundred thousand dollars of residential assessment. And that concludes my presentation for draft two.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Carter.
Sorry, I just have a, a number of questions for clarification, like throughout. So if we start your twenty twenty-four draft one follow-up, the food cycler project, was there a contract for that?
I am unsure of that, as that was overseen by the planning department. The CIO may have an answer or we may need to look into that and get back to council.
Yes, in, in a general sense, there was, it was, it's my understanding, it would, it would be an extension to the, the current, the way it was done now. There was, there was, it hadn't been finalized because there was an additional grant that was applied for to, to extenuate the, the pro, or enhance the program. That grant was not approved. So we went back to, we'd have to restructure it on the lower amount, which was the ninety-three thousand dollars or eighty-three thousand dollars, excuse me, in the, in the budget.
So that, we could go either way on that, basically. We're not committed.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Next question was on the, the two EMS supervisors. You've got it, there's a one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from reserve is somewhere that I saw.
For those positions, there's nothing being transferred from reserve. We currently have nine months of two medics, sorry, nine months of two supervisors included in twenty twenty-four, which I believe is a total of two hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly. Next year in twenty twenty-five, we would get fifty percent of that nine months applied to the twenty twenty-five full twelve month.
Okay, my mistake, Isaac. Yeah, it was in your twenty twenty-five list, so I thought that was fine.
But there's, but there's no recovery on the twenty twenty-four expenditure.
Okay. The next question is on the M-PAC, the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars expense. What is that?
That's our annual levy that we pay to M-PAC.
You mean, we pay them to do nothing? I mean, unfortunately, we're paying them a million dollars and, you know, we've, what are we getting? I know they assess the new homes and that, but, sorry. On your, your list of protection to persons and property, we had talked in the, in the short-term rental that, you know, there'd probably be an appeals group that we, we generally have spoken about as being at the county. Do we expect that that would be fully funded by the short-term rental? Like, unfortunately, all the monies can be collected at the, at the municipal level and if the appeals are at the county, somebody's got to pay for it. Now, it could be that it's, you know, it becomes a net zero, but I think it should at least be in the budget that there be some monies for the appeal, even if it's then being paid for. I don't know how it's going to be paid for.
I, I, I'm going to try and answer a bit of your question than the deferred to Mr. Robell. So I'm not sure actually how much administrative expenditure would be attributed to that system, given because from a timing standpoint, we're going to be considerably into twenty twenty-four before we get into that. It would be, again, similar to my comments on the police detachment board, is that my expectation would be that would be supported by the local municipalities, not the county. We may administer it, but I think it should be supported by the local municipalities with an inflow into the county.
But if you administer it and if you provide even some staff or something, you have county-level costs that you'd have to recoup from the municipality. I, I just, in the interest of transparency, mostly the transparency for me, so I don't forget about it, that there should be at least, what we call, you know, I'm calling a placeholder, like something in the budget that, that addresses it, even if it is a net zero. Or expected that we at least, we at least don't forget about it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I might, we, we can put a, a, a flow-through amount with the corresponding revenue source. The only way thing is, we would have to realize that revenue source, right? And so we can, we can address that. I'll speak to Mr. Robell and we figure out how we can, can address that part of the, is going forward, is at least recognizing the process.
Yeah, just so we don't forget about it. The, the next question was on, it was just a comment on the social services and housing. Like you said, that those are payments we make to CKL. Those are payments we make to CKL through our agreement of, of, of how we split costs, the total costs and, and a lot of these funds are the, the rent geared to income subsidies that we have and also for the maintenance of the buildings that are within Halliburton County. So it's not like we're just paying CKL. It's, uh, this has all been, we've already determined and just recently approved the new contract for it. It's, it's good to see what the number is because every time somebody talks about expanding the amount of Every time somebody talks about expanding the amount of housing, you, you can see what the cost of that really is to the, to the county. The, uh, then the next question was on. The E C Dev and tourism. Uh, it wa, it was just the, the, the amount of the expense, uh, and. I can ask later to get the detailed break, but there's obviously people who are, who are associated with that.
If I might, Counselor Carter, maybe we can have Mr. Robell speak to that directly.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to see the breakdown. It's not, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to hold up this meeting for it. On the, uh, reserves is, I think this is true, this is a full list of all the reserves that we have.
That's correct.
Are there any of these reserves that are, um, restricted in terms of what they could be used for?
No.
Okay, and then, uh, and that's like where we have the water and sewer ones in our, at the municipal level, we can only use it for. Those books.
Yeah, we currently do not have any legislative reserves.
And so we don't have really then a dedicated working capital reserve.
Uh, not at this time. It's my understanding, um, that's what was used to purchase the We Care property. And that emptied that reserve.
This is, we have, we have a run rate of two million dollars a month. And so, you know, when you look at our reserves, you know, whether or not that for some reason we weren't. We get delayed in provincial fundings, which we always do, we get, if for some reason there's a delay in the collection of taxes. Which, you know, us great municipalities are never late paying you, but, you know, if, if ever there was a reason where there was a delay, we need to. We need to be conscious of having enough money to keep everything running. And those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions from other members of council? Comments? There's, uh, to me, there's a lot to discuss here. I'm, you know, really looking for people to comment on where they see we can make some savings or what concerns you might have. Counselor Ryle?
Yeah, I just, I think it's just a question of getting clarity more than anything else. Uh, in the health section, we're removing one day of training. And a lot of times that kind of perks me up as to, we could take it out. So is it just a general, the nature of that particular day that's being removed? Obviously, it's been determined as not required, but I was just wondering, was there a subject that, that, that was there that made it removable?
I will defer that question to the chief.
Not that we can't use the extra day of training, um, but just in the, uh. Uh, we have scheduled three days of training for the paramedics this year. Two of them are based hospital, um. Focused, um, and one of them is an in-house focused, uh, C M E day. So originally, we had planned. An in-house, um, C M E day for the spring and one for the fall. Looking at the content that we can deliver to our paramedics, I thought that in the, uh. In some, trying to find some of the savings that we could, uh, we could eliminate one day this year.
Go ahead.
So you're comfortable it's not going to impact the overall service level as, as Mr. Dyke had said wouldn't happen?
No, I, 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 I don't see that. We'll, we'll make sure that the content for the one C media covers, you know, what we need for this year.
Counselor Dayu?
Um, there is reference in the report to, uh, the continuation of a small budget for the administration of the corporate. Climate change mitigation plan, and also that the planning department would look after the community climate change. Climate action plan, and I just wonder, was there a budget proportion, a portion to the community plan? That is continuing or is not going to exist or never existed?
The twelve thousand dollar, uh, budget that was spoken to in the report. Is for the administration of the overall county's climate change mitigation plan.
Counselor Carter.
So this is just a general comment, and, you know, it's one of these things of rolling it on the table to maybe start some discussion. But I would like to see that our increase be reduced by two or two and a half percent. To in the neighborhood of five percent increase. So that's just my rolling it onto the table.
Just if I might step in there for a second. So this is.
Better you than me.
Um, I'm going to put this. I, I think, given the where we're at now with the amount of, as, as we mentioned, we have of the increase. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars is applied to administration, right? So. Trying to make up the increases that are out of our control on administration with the cuts we've made. We are actually, we're going to be looking at service level changes, not saying we will look at whatever council asks us to, that, that's not my point. It's just like, so that's the depth of discussion we're going to, we're getting into, and if I believe correctly, two percent equates to. Four, that's four hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is almost matching what we've already taken out of the bu, uh, the budget as well. So. Um, just remember a purely expectation setting thing, and I appreciate the, 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 the intent of the comment counselor. From a purely an expectation standard, I can categorically state right this second. That we don't have four hundred and thousand dollars. In cuts to the operations of the county without modifying the service level. That, that's, that's what I'll, I'll just leave it there. We will, we'll take our direction from council, but that's, that's where we're at right now with the, the leanness of the budget. And as well, again, is to your point regarding reserves, and we'll definitely bring back a more fulsome report on reserves and possibly looking at restructuring reserves to go for. Because yes, there's a valuable financial to it is going forward. Part of the increase again is us trying to rebuild those reserves, right? And so that's part of the equation as well, but I just want to put that out there as to where we've been on what can cut already. Um, and then we, we, we'll obviously take our direction from council, but that's just from an expectation setting standpoint, that's, I thought that was important to mention, so.
Yeah, for, if you're looking for comments from other members of council, I, I, you know, I, I see that as unachievable. When I look at, uh, at the work that's been done to cut the budget to, to this point, I mean, it, it would be a wonderful goal if we could meet that. I just don't think we can. And when I look at, at the increases that are, we, we all seem to, when I'm, when I'm looking at what's, uh. Where Highlands East has landed, where Dicard at all has landed, and where I think that, uh, that our own municipality, Algonquin Highlands, will likely land in and around the. Between six point five and seven, we all seem to be landing in, in around the same area, and, and, and I know that there has been a lot of effort made to reduce costs. That we're not far off. Where they've landed. I, I just see that, that, that's just too much. I'm not saying that there aren't areas where we can make some savings. Cause I do believe that there are. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm willing to put forward, I mean, honestly, I hate to say it because I am an absolute supporter of the library and the services of the library offer. But to see the increases that they have asked for over the last three years and to see them always be substantially higher than the increases that. That the rest of the county council departments have made. Um, and, and then to ask them to make, to look for some savings and see them come back with requesting more money. Uh, I, I have a problem with that. Like, I, I really think that we've got to go back to them with the. Come to some, our agreement on where we think that they should land, and I know that we can't say how they do that. But I, I think that there should be some room for savings here. Um, I, I sense that there could be some. Discussion about, and, and I, sorry, Chief Wade. I sense that there could be some discussion about the supervisors, um, you know, that we could maybe blend, start in, and I had forgotten that. That in fact, in the long term, we were looking for four supervisors, not two, but, you know, and, and my thinking was like. And I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that maybe we could look at, at starting off with one. And, and working into two, and, you know, as, as subsequent years go by. So I, I'm not saying there isn't room for savings, because I think there are. But that amount of savings, I'm not, I'm not sure is achievable. I see, uh, three hands. We'll start at the end with Counselor Shell and then, uh, Ryle and Dayu.
Thank you. Um, for many years, I think that all, well, not just, not just local councils, but across the province and, and beyond. Have tried to, um, keep the, the rates around three percent, three and a half, less than five percent, basically, for. To appease the public, and unfortunately, the chickens have come home to roost, and we have depleted reserves. The cost of doing business is far more than it was even, even two years ago, post or three years ago, almost now, I guess. Pre-COVID, and I, I don't see how sort of really cutting back on, you know, people are going to complain if we don't do the road. So, you know, which road do you pick out? And then it just gets, no pun intended, but just kick down the road to another year. Un, unfortunately, I, I don't see where we're going to make any huge cuts. In this budget, like you said, there are some maybe things within the library budget, which I know we took a, a quite a hit in the newspaper for that, but. You know, we have to remember that there are people that live in Moore Falls and Kinesis Lake and places like that, that still have to drive twenty minutes to get to their library too, maybe even longer. So. Anyway, that's just, just my thoughts. I don't see us, um, cutting this two hundred thousand dollars as much as I would like to be able to say we could.
Four hundred and forty is what, is what the percentage is.
Or two percent, I'm sorry, to cut it to two percent. So anyway, that's, that's just, it's.
It's a reality.
But we're all taxpayers who sit here. This will also affect all of us and, uh. Yeah, I think it's time we, it's, it's time we just bit the bullet, I think, and try to get back in line with the reality that the province isn't going to be giving us. Or the feds are going to be giving us the money they used to. The cost of everything has gotten to be more expensive and, you know, as the CIO said earlier. Most of our money comes from the tax, taxes, so I'm not sure what the answer is short of having tax increases.
Thank you. Well, uh, we've got two, and then we'll, we'll come over to you, uh, Counselor Rail.
I, I totally absolutely agree with, with what, what the warden has said and what Counselor Shell has said. Mr. Dyke made it crystal clear, we can't kick the can down the road. And to some extent, we cannot reduce the service levels that we are currently providing. There is a tolerance there, which I'm sure, based on what I've heard so far in, in the budget meetings, you guys have picked this up three ways to Saturday. And, 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 yeah, you're still looking for another nickel or a dime, but it ain't going to be a hundred bucks. You know, you might find a nickel or dime to cut it back, but you're not going to, you're not going to be finding gobs and gobs of money. And so my personal opinion is, thank you. Thank you for the effort that this staff has put into. Thank you for the way you detailed it to us, and unfortunately, we're the people that have to make the decision. And, uh, and I can't see, as, as Counselor Shell said, any way around this other than some minor tweaking left to come.
Counselor Dayu?
So here's my pitch in defense of the library budget. I think it's important to recall that, you know, a, a lot of this, uh, uh, increased budget is going towards. A new operational cost for Dorset, for the, for a reopening branch. The, the new branch in Dorset is very important for our community. We haven't had a library up there for, for several years. The closest library that folks up in Oxtong Lake. Um, can, uh, can get to in terms of the Halliburton service is a forty five minute drive away, which is a very long way to go to visit your, your local library for. You know, in, in the local county where you pay your own taxes. We also, there are certain things up in, in the northern part of the county that we don't get to. Enjoy as much as folks further south, and I've put together a little bit of a list. We don't, um, uh, have access to the, the EMS services because of the division of, uh, of the EMS across the board. We tend to get our, our EMS from, from Huntsville, uh, and there is, um. There is a mutual agreement there so that, that they can also use our services, but, um, you know, the, the, the additions to the budget. For this year for the supervisors, for example, will not be impacting, um, uh, folks up in the northern part of Algonquin Highlands. We don't have a We Care facility in, in Algonquin, uh, in, in Algonquin Highlands, especially in the north. The doctor recruitment is predominantly for doctors to come down to the south. There's no rail trail up in the north of, of Algonquin Highlands. The transit pilot project, which I'm in favor of, is also not going to be impacting our, uh, our folks. There are a lot of things that we in the north do not get to enjoy, um, that, that are more accessible down in the south. Um, and the library is one thing that we could really, really benefit from. Islands East has four branches. Um, Minton and Dicard have two beautiful branches. We've got one branch in the very, very southern end. Uh, that a, a big chunk of our residents don't have access to. And the libraries, they offer such an incredible service, especially to vulnerable folks. Especially to seniors, especially to schoolchildren who use those spaces as a safe place to hang out. To gather, um, to have free programming, uh, but they get to, to meet other people in their community. Um, the people who don't have, uh, enough money for a printer can come and print things out of the library. They can rent DVDs there. A lot of people don't have internet. They're not streaming their movies, but they can, they can take a DVD out. At the local library and the, and the DVD, uh, rental is doing a thriving business at the library still. And I think a lot of us do forget that there are folk who really require these free services. Um, and, and it's part of our responsibility as council and council to, to, to look to those needs. Uh, and to try to, to serve our community in those softer, more social ways as well. In Algonquin Highlands, we simply do not have those sorts of services from the county that we used to have, and. And I think, um, we could really, really benefit from. So I know it's an increase to the budget, but I am still in favor. Of trying to equalize what the county is offering across our entire territory, and the, I think the Dorset library would be one. Very substantial and, and hugely welcomed way of creating that equalization.
I, I believe Counselor Shell wishes to.
I just wanted to respond, because when I made the comment about libraries, I wasn't suggesting we shouldn't open the Dorset library. I'm just suggesting that perhaps because there are so many branches within the county, that we take a, a look at the hours of operation, perhaps that's where. This, some of the savings can come from. I, I don't know the answer. I'm just, I'm not suggesting that Dorset shouldn't open it. It's wonderful. However, there's got, something has to give some place where this can be brought down to a, a more reasonable number.
Well, and, and I have to say too, when I, when I bring up the library, I mean, I've been on the library board for thirteen years now, and, and I fully agree with, with, you know, the things that you're saying, and I do not believe. That the increase is specific to the Dorset branch opening. I think that that's, that's a, a whitewash. Uh, when it comes to an argument that, you know, that, that's the, the main cause, because they're, you know. They're asking for, I'm not sure, was it ten, ten point three percent increase? And we're looking at seven, seven point six, um, you know, for the rest of the, uh, you know, I just think that there should be some effort to look at things. And, and come to some reasonable solution. Um, and, and to your argument, I mean, you, you and I both made the same argument about the things that we don't get. That we contribute to as far as county services go, and that argument can be made over and over and over again. But, you know, I think that there's an awful lot of other services that are, that are, um, m, more relative necessarily than, than library. I mean, library is not the only piece of that, and that's not, you know, where we're also looking for. I mean, if you look at, uh, at EMS services, you know, to have an ambulance base. You know, Algonquin Highlands would make a big difference. Things like transportation makes a big difference. I'm going over to Mr. Counselor McKeckney and then Counselor Fair.
Yeah, um, I agree with, uh, Counselor Carter. That, uh, we got to find two, at least two percent, because, um, I hate being a hypocrite. I'm a big believer in, uh, government, uh, just spending, spending and spending. I think, um, these budgets. And we, I know about COVID, I know about inflation, I know about cost of doing business and all these stories, but it's time to say no. Um, the, we're not talking a lot of money here, but it's just a monster that you, you just keep adding to and adding to, which is happening and happening. I don't, I'm not going to sit here and start naming, uh, departments, but if we, if we can't find two percent, then I don't think we're doing our job. That's just my opinion. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
I, I would hope, Counselor McKeckney, that, you know, in, in the search for the two percent that you're looking for, which I, I still. Uh, would say I, I don't think is achievable, we would look to you for recommendations about where you would look to find that. Other than just saying like, find two percent. I think that staff have done everything they can within their power, and it was now kind of up to us to say. Okay, here's where we see that the savings need to be found. So, you know, we just, we've got some time to think about that. But I would, I'd like, you know, if, if you're insisting that we find that kind of savings, we're going to need suggestions from you about where that might take place. Well, I look forward to that. Well, I look forward to that. Councillor Fury.
Couple of things that we can always uh um sit back and say, well, because of where we're situated geographically, we don't get the same services as the two larger centers do. But, you know, we provide uh uh, for instance, uh, the nursing home in Halliburton's got several people from Algonquin Highlands and Highlands East. Don't it it because it benefits the community. It's not because it's in one place or the other, has to be with their services. But I was a little annoyed today to hear the librarian say, part of the reason for uh rural libraries was because of the distance. Well, we got an hour's drive from Percy Lake and a little community at Kinesis Lake to get to Halliburton. But they deal, they do use the library. So, and so what's next? What if we decide they've got uh uh Miners Bay, they've got uh the the other side of uh Highlands East. Yeah. What if they decided to put them in? Like this thing could grow, can grow. I think we should have one major library each. And if we want another one, and if we feel that strongly about it, it's just a few hours a week, then why doesn't the township do it?
Well, then our our problem is that that we're restricted in being able to say how the library spends their money. It's up to us to say, here's how much money you've got. And and they're the ones that get to decide where that cut's going to take.
So you're saying, telling me that a municipality can't have its own library independent of the county system?
No, um, I'm sorry, I'm I'm not.
Yes, so so this is a short and a long answer to this question. So the short answer is yes. There there's two ways that library systems can be provided in Ontario. And one is being at the local level where each misspell is responsible for their own library service or at the at the county level. The account is a county system and a local system. I don't know of one where there's a hybrid where the county provides service to a portion and not all, or it's it's all local. So there are two structures for library boards under the Library Act. Um, it would require administratively, logistically, there's there's changes that would have to be put in place. But yes, technically you can switch from a county system to a local municipal system. It's permissible. I'm not.
That's a huge amount of work.
Oh, it's it's big and I'm not sure.
Maybe it may be practical, I don't.
Yeah, and honestly, just with respect, councillor Fury, I I'm not sure it would result in savings.
No.
Right?
Oh, I don't think it will.
Yeah.
But it's not going the other way either.
But but what a local municipality can do and and is make a decision that they're going to close one. Now, you're not likely to do that. You've got one library. Minton's not likely to do that because they've got one library.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, in in the, I mean, we could, I guess, deciding Algonquin Highlands not to go forward with Dyse with Dorset, but I think we're.
You made your pass that decision.
We are, you know, unfortunately.
I remember going to Dorset, terrible winter storms. It when we were going to close it before. And they kept saying, oh, we're going to use it, but they didn't use it. That's why it closed. So it's I hope that doesn't happen again, Jennifer, because I hope they will use it. Uh, I I think libraries are essential, but like Dyshick's paying our our portion, the current the county levy is $520,000 for libraries. Yeah, that's almost a hundred dollars for every man, woman and child. And it just goes up every year. Uh, I I think we've got to get the brakes on here and we have to do it here, not cut services. But every time you ask for something, you don't automate. To me, buying that van was just a waste of money. Because the the echo's sitting there with the van, they only use one day a week. But obviously, staff never looked at any alternatives. Like that was 60,000 bucks. Uh, so.
And ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, and and the maintenance. And then we got to hire drivers, which we could have contracted to, but those are the decisions that are made and that we've got it now. So I I just think uh and I'm not blaming the board because they're there, what, two hours a week or a month? Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's management. Uh, and it all sounds good and you think you got a lot of programs going on, but there's there can be no end to the programs, children's programs. They can keep coming up with things to spend money and and we sit here at the county trying to, I mean, I got criticized in the paper and so did Bob for even asking a question about it. Damn it, that's what we're here for, is to ask questions and get answers. And all of us. So, you know what? That's my rant for today. So. I'm I'm not uh going to cut stuff that's going to hurt people, but I am going to be asking questions.
Um, we'll go to Gary and and then over to uh the councillor Carter and councillor Rayo.
Uh, just from a context standpoint, I think it's the 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 comments made by councillor Fury are are well taken. And I think um, both Ms. Robbins and I met with the the library's CEO ahead of the budget process and explained the situation and and the revaluation we did internally. We had, and I'm going to get myself in the paper, but I apologize. We had requested the same level of review. Again, understanding my responsibility, I can't tell them how to spend their money. I was explaining how we internally look to reprioritize our spending in different areas because of to mitigate any increases. To date, we haven't seen any of that come back. And so that was my point back to the library. And I still encourage them to, what have you done to to try to spend existing money instead of just going looking for new money? And and so they'll allow council to make this, this council to make the decision around it the merits of an increase versus the service level being provided. So sorry, I'll stop.
It's quarter after 12. I think we're going to take a quick break and 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 have lunch and then I'll recognize both councillors. Hold that thought. I think lunch is here. So if if we could take, you know, even a 20 minute, it's it's cold lunch. So we take a quick break and we'll get back to the discussion.
Welcome back to the open session and the continuation of our budget discussion. And I think that was over to Councilor Carter and then Councilor Rayal.
That was so long ago. No, I think the important thing here is to say that certainly speaking for myself, I'm not saying that anybody on staff has not done everything they can to look at every nook and cranny of, you know, where there's some dollars that can be saved. You know, I think that what we are saying is a little bit more along the lines of, okay, you found the savings by maintaining the exact level of service that we've had. And what we're saying is that, or what I'm saying, is that we have to look at all the services that we're providing. I'm not saying that there has to be, you know, necessarily cuts in services, but maybe we are providing too much and we have to try to make it as equitable as possible. And there's always going to be the comparisons of, you know, oh, well, you've got an arena and it's, you know, it's all about, you know, kids playing hockey and, you know, versus the library or something like that. It's not that. I mean, we have lots of programs. We have curling clubs. We have yoga. We have gyms. We have, you know, pickleball. We have all sorts of things that we are providing across the county. And we have to decide how much is it that we can afford to provide. We don't keep saying this, we don't have a large commercial or industrial tax base that can save us. As the C A O said earlier, the percentage of the taxes or the funding that comes from our taxpayers, that's where we get our money and we have to make sure that we are spending that as fairly as as possible. You know, if we have a large increase in one area and we have to add a couple of hundred dollars in taxes to each household in the county. You know, how many kids don't get to go to summer camp next year? How many kids don't get to be able to sign up for soccer or whatever it is? I mean, there's, you know, every dollar has to be accounted for. And that's all I'm saying is that, you know, let's, let's, let's see what the cost of, you know, reducing the budget is because there's obviously a cost. You reduce, you reduce a program, you reduce services. So I just want us to, you know, take a true hard look at that. Don't want to cut things like the C A O said earlier. I think it was about a program that we can save $10,000 this year, but we're going to have to pay it next year. Not interested in that. We're interested in something where we, we cut something and, and we don't have to do it again. You know, so anyway, that's just my point.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Rayal?
Yeah, I think I'm going to pick up the conversation that we had over the library board again. Um, let's assume for the sake of argument that, that the library board comes up with what we believe to be the bottom line. Like this is it. We've cut everything we can and nothing can be done. And let's assume just for the argument that that number is what we currently have. Is it possible for an individual lower tier municipality to make a contribution separate from the county to the library work? Yes or no?
I would say yes. I mean, they, they have revenue streams from, from a variety of different areas, but yeah. Um, if a municipality wanted to do that, they could. Although I think you've already settled on your budget. Yeah. So simple answer, yes. Any other comments? Okay. So we know that there's going to be, you know, a little bit more tinkering done or at least discussion take place. You know, with our liaison members and, and myself. Uh, we will come back on the sixth of March with the budget and hopefully we can land somewhere there and come to an agreement. In the meantime, you know, I would ask everybody to take a good look at the budget again, think about where they see. There might be some opportunities that aren't going to cause too much damage. And, you know, let, let Gary know. So I guess I would be looking for a motion to accept the operating budget presentation. That's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Moved by Councilor Carter and seconded by Councilor Fury.
Uh, that the Halliburton County Council receives the February 14th staff report and draft as number two budget presentation, sorry, that the that the draft budget presentation be received.
Hold on, favor. Just carried. So the item number eight point two is deferred to March the sixth. That's the approval. Are there any notice of motions? Councilor Fury.
It's not actually, not actually a notice of motion, but um, last week I had a meeting with the President of Sanford Fleming. As you know, they're building student residence housing uh, in Halliburton and what's happened with the fed, the feds, uh, cutting the foreign students in half. Uh, Peterborough, a large portion of Peterborough's revenues and Lindsay's is with foreign students. So it's got, it has a dramatic effect on their cash flow. And they are going to, they plan on going ahead with the building and they've got it underway. But she said because of the cuts and the lack of financing, the probably the fact that they, how they furnish it and how they get people in there for next year, the year after, it's going to be, going to be slowed down because of cash flow. So we did a, we have a, Peterborough passed a resolution to the feds. I could forward that, but I'd sure like to think that we would support that here. Like we're talking housing. And that housing, if, if the kid's staying in Mendenham or Algonquin Highlands and he goes to the, to the facility, that's going to free up space for somebody else. So I think it affects us all. And I'd certainly like to think that if I sent that resolution or three of us had a look at it on Friday, that we would forward our support to, to get the feds to think differently the way they cut it.
You're, you're talking about letter of support?
Yeah, just a letter of support. Yeah. No financial support, just a letter.
Yeah. By all means, uh, just send us the, you know, the information you've got. Okay. Um, okay. Any other notice of motions? Okay. I, could I have a move in a second or two, uh, pass the confirming by law? Councilors Carter and Rayal.
Uh, the bylaw forty two twenty nine being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and to seal the corporation to fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, a motion to adjourn. Councilor McKetney. Second by, Councilor Dayu.
Be resolved that the February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of council be adjourned at twelve fifty eight P O.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks very much, everyone. I know this was a bit of a disjointed meeting, but because of our special presentation and delegation.